Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Today is Tuesday, January the 14th, and we are meeting at 6:30 PM in the Harry Butters Selectmen's Chambers at Norwood Town Hall, 566 Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts. We have a full agenda this evening, which I will introduce in a moment, but first, as is our tradition, we will rise for a reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent reflection. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a full agenda this evening. Just as a preview, we will have our regular items of warrants, signature update, and approval of the minutes. We do have a couple of appointments this evening. 6:40, we are meeting with the Norwood Concert Committee. 7:00 PM, we're meeting with Attorney Phil Mackey and Mr. Pat Corrigan regarding the 9/23-9/29 Washington Street proposed development. And at 7:30, we have a public hearing on water insurorates. So with that, before we go into our 6:40 appointment, let's focus on our agenda. Item number one, which is the warrant signature update. Do I have a motion?
Accept and file.
Do I have a second? Mr. Lane, seconds. I should say that Ms. Grow is joining us remotely, as is Mr. Mazuka. With that, this evening's roll call votes will be called member by member. On the motion to approve and file, the warrant, Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Ms. Grow?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes, five, nothing, carry. The second item is our meeting minutes for approval of the board submitting meeting minutes for December 3rd and December 17th, 2024. Any comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Approve or disapprove, submitted.
Seconded by Mr. Sad. On the motion to approve meeting minutes for December 3rd and December 17th, Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko? Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Ms. Grow? Carries five, nothing.
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, I believe what we can do is, we're a couple of minutes early, but I'm going to invite the Concert Committee in at this point now. Jean, I see you out there. If you can have the other members come on in. We'll take you a little early. We'll get you in and out early. How's that?
It's good.
And if we need an extra chair, we can grab one from up here.
Paul, will you grab this for her?
No, she's got a chair. We're fine.
I'm sorry, she's got one.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending, and thank you for all the work you do on the Concert Committee. This evening, the Concert Committee has requested an opportunity to come before the board to talk about the upcoming 2025 Winter Concert Series. So with that, we left a copy of the program for each of the members. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tuttle, who will be the official spokespersons for the Concert Committee. Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Why don't you tell us about the concert series coming up in January?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an exciting series of concerts, starting on January 26th and running for four Sundays at the high school. They'll be from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, and they are free. The first concert on the 26th is a group called Portrait and Jazz. On the 2nd of February, we have the Roy Scott Big Band. On the 9th of February, we have a returning favorite for both the winter and summer concerts, Stan Cabell and the Able Tones. And then we close out the series on February 16th with Silver Spears. So a good group of musicians who will be here to entertain us. So we hope everybody will come up to the high school again. It's the Sunday, starting on the 26th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. We do have a large group of regular sponsors, but in particular, for the winter concerts, we have the Bank of Canton, the Bach Fund, Dedham Savings Bank, the Norwood Women's Club, One Local Bank, and I think that's all of them that are particular for the winter concerts. But we appreciate all our sponsors. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Paul Leesi, one of our founding members of the Concert Committee for the Sunday concerts, who's going to talk a little bit about Barbara Kinter, who our concerts are dedicated to her memory.
Thank you, David, and thank you, members of the Board of Selectmen and all my colleagues here. First of all, this is a very special winter series because this one person that has been with the town so long and has worked so hard over the years, we would be remiss not to bring her up tonight. And I was so pleased that our entire committee voted to dedicate this winter series to the late Barbara Kinter. Most of you, I'm sure all of you, I'm not sure about the new Assistant Town Manager, but Barbara, she was like one of the backbones of this town. Before the bandstand was there and the town common was empty, Barbara was one of the few of us that met with John Carroll and said, you know, "Let us try to build this bandstand." And she pioneered financially. She was a part of the Chamber of Commerce. She was involved in everything. And she went out and solicited all this kind of money. And then, you know, once the bandstand was built, you know, we wanted to create the Sunday concert program. I remember saying to Barbara, "Well, where are we going to get the money to pay for this?" She said, "Don't you worry about that." And sure enough, Barbara came through every year. So God bless her. And like I said, I'm pleased that we voted to dedicate the entire winter series to Barbara Kinter. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I also wanted to mention that we have a free raffle at every concert, and the raffle prizes are donated by Acapulco's Irish Brewing, Domino's Luster Cleaners, Furlongs, and Napertandys Pub. So we hope people will come out, try their luck for that. And also, if I could take just another minute and mention some of the Concert Committee members who are here or are absent tonight. We have Olga Abdullah, who, again, has been with us for 30 years, Paul?
More than 30, yeah.
Lee Leach, who's our Town Caroliner. Assistant Town Manager Michael Rosen. Bob Donley, yourself, Mr. Chairman. Dorothy Brevor, who's here. Lisa O'Leary. Jean Vator, who's here. Paul Leesi. Tony Mazuka, the Town Manager. Pat Sichik, who's sitting next to me. And Kevin Bratrick are all our committee members.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Comments or questions from the board? I'll let the senior member go first. Mr. Plasko.
Yeah. I would just say, I think the chairman said at the beginning, "It's a simple thank you for everything you do and continue to do. It's been going on for so long. We think we take it for granted." And even the addition, how many years now the indoor winter concerts? Even that seems like a big one.
I would say the Sunday concerts, Wednesdays, are more than 30 years. The high school ones have got to be 15 years now.
Yeah. But I offered your hand out here. I was down and I saw Barbara's name, and I got a smile, so I'm glad you made the recognition. And thank you all for what you do.
Thank you. Anything else from any members? Mr. Lane, and then Ms. Grow.
Just very quickly, thank you for all that you do. Is there any need for additional volunteers for any of these concerts?
We're always welcome help.
And what's the best way for someone to volunteer and get in touch?
Email to the Assistant Town Manager.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Yeah, thanks for all you do. These are great. I've done a bunch of them, and thank you for organizing and putting them on.
Ms. Grow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello, everybody. I know I'm not physically there, but they're in spirit. Yeah, I'm just really grateful for all the work that the committee puts in. I know it's a lot of effort to wrangle all of these moving parts, but the winter concert series in particular is a big bright spot to me because it's, you know, depending on how the weather is, it's just, it's one of those nice times you can actually get together with the other community members when you would otherwise feel a little loath to go outside. So I just, I really appreciate the winter concert series, and I just wanted to thank you all for your hard work for making it happen, because it obviously doesn't happen without you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sad.
I want to say the same comments to my board members here, and I seen the member, Bill Plasko, on to my left, but I know that, Paul, you started this, and I started the South North Fishing Dairy. Those are a long way back. I did love the way how you pushed it off to Dave Tuttle like this. But I want to thank the entire committee and how much work it is on Dave and the whole committee. And Barbara Kinter was, as Bill said, she's a spark plug. She was a member of the Walpole Country Club with me, and whenever you needed anything, Barbara would be the go-to with Ollie and the whole committee. And over the years, it's been spectacular and an asset to the Norwood community. And for those people, we're going to keep it going. And I'd like to nominate Matt to be the chairman next year. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sad. I just wanted to relay a story to the audience and to the committee itself. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to drop off the program to Ollie Abdullah at the package store along with Helen Donaghy, and they both happened to be there. And I brought the program in, and they were just so pleased that the dedication of this year's series is to Barbara. Spent probably an extra 25 minutes than I intended to at the story yesterday because they had so much to say about the program and also about Barbara. And being a member of the committee, I do know that there's a lot of time and effort goes into producing this program and finding the bands and talking to the bands and scheduling. And I think that it's wonderful work that we do here on the committee. And February 16th is our last concert of the series, but basically, right after we end the winter series, we're starting the plan for the summertime. Because even though our summer concerts don't begin until July, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to organize the logistic and the fundraising and program development for those concerts going forward. And you'll be back here, I'm sure, in better weather to talk a little more about that program for the summer. But on behalf of the board, thank you so much for the work you do. Really looking forward to the concert series. Everybody watching, it's a wonderful evening to spend, a wonderful afternoon to spend at Norwood High School, which is a beautiful performing arts center, to listen to these bands, which are really quality bands, too. You'll get a good show by coming and watching these shows, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks, everyone. You don't have to do that, Paul. You're very tidy, Paul.
That one belongs over there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We do have an appointment at 7:00 PM, and at this time, what I'd like to suggest to the committee is we spend the next few minutes going through our new business agenda items. So with that, I'm going to move on to the agenda to, if that works for you folks, I will do that. We will move to item 4.1, Town Common Use Summer Fest and Sunday Concerts, very timely. Just talked about the winter schedule now. We are actually planning for the summer, come to think of it, with this new business item. Submitting their request to use the Dempsey Bandstand in the Town Common for Summer Fest concerts beginning Wednesday, July 9th through August the 27th, 2025, from 6:30 PM until 8:30 PM. And Sunday concerts beginning on July the 6th through August the 24th, 2025, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. Mr. Rosen, on this application, would you give us a little background, please?
Sure. Mr. Chair, good evening. Yes, so we put in, on behalf of the Concerts Committee, of which I'm a member, we put in an application to reserve the Town Common and the Bandstand for all of our Sunday and Wednesday shows for the summertime. We do request setup and breakdown time, so the usage of the common will be starting at 4:30 PM each of those evenings and breaking down by 9:30 PM each of those evenings. The actual shows themselves will be contained between 6:30 and 8:30 PM, usually with a short intermission somewhere in the middle. So it's been very effective. We've been doing this for a few years now, and we hope we get about 200 people per show that enjoy each of our shows.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Rosen. And just by way of adification, so the reason, even though the shows begin at 6:30, we're requesting 4:30 as an opportunity for the bands to unload their equipment and set up on the gazebo so that the public knows that, starting at 4:30, the gazebo is reserved for those bands to set up.
That's correct. They tune up, they practice song, make sure that they're in tune. Yep.
Exactly. Any comments, questions regarding item number 4.1? Mr. Plasko?
I think the estimate of 200 attending is probably a little shy, a little low, but from past experience, the common is obviously large enough to handle the crowd that does show up and enjoy the evening. So I'd move approval.
Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Lane. On the motion to approve Town Use Common Use for Summer Fest and Sunday Concerts, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko? Yes. Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Ms. Grow?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, carries five, nothing. Next item on the agenda is a donation to the Norwood Fire Department for acceptance by the board. A donation from Frank R. and Elizabeth Simone Foundation in the amount of $6,525 that will be used to fund the purchase of natural gas and CO detectors. Anything on this, Mr. Rosen, that you'd like to add?
I have the memo that the board has as well. I don't know if, Mr. Mazuka, do you have any background on this? I just have the memo that you have as well.
Yeah, just that the Simone Foundation is historically been very, very generous to the community and the town as a whole, and we're grateful that they, for this donation. Obviously, you'll have one coming up just after for the police department.
Great. So, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to find myself at the right spot on the agenda. I do note that in addition to the donation letter here, we do have Chief Bailey's acceptance or thanking of the donors for this donation. Any questions about the donation or comments? Mr. Sad?
I just, I know the Betty Simone and the McDonald family, and I just want to say congratulations and thank you for their generous support to the town of Oud once again.
Great. Mr. Lane, anything?
Mr. Sad said it well.
All right. Any other comments? Mr. Plasko?
Same as Mr. Sad, I would have suggested a thank you letter, although the chief has already done that, so I don't know if you think that's appropriate enough, but for the record, make a motion to accept the donation under chapter 4453A to be spent as indicated.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Lane. On the motion to accept the donation, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, five, nothing, carries. Item 4.3, also a donation. This is a donation for acceptance, this is a donation to the Norwood Police Department for acceptance by the board. A donation also from Frank R. and Elizabeth Simone Foundation in the amount of $7,000 that will be used to support the purchase of CPR mannequins and new training aids. I think in your packet, members do have the letter from Mr. McDonald to Chief Patton. Any comments or anything else to be added here? Mr. Plasko?
Well, the same donor, so thank you once again for generosity. And again, just to accept it under chapter 4453A to be expended for the intended purposes and to send a letter of thanks.
Yes. If I may just suggest, Mr. Plasko, maybe we could send a letter of acceptance to the Simone for both donations, one letter for both donations?
Yeah, that works.
Okay. Mr. Sad?
I was going to say the same thing and add an amendment to Bill's motion that we send a letter from the Board of Selectmen, signed by yourself and any board members who want, and ask Matthew McDonald, who's very generous with Betty, and if they might want to add to the Bach Fund, the Simone Fund, we can give out to the local sports and groups.
We'll put down the letter. You can talk to them about that.
All right, put the letter up, but I'll talk to them.
All right, well, it's a good thought.
Good idea, Bill.
Mr. Sad. We have a motion to approve by Mr. Plasko. Mr. Lane, you seconded it, I believe.
Yep, and if I didn't, I'm doing so badly.
Okay, with the stipulation that we do a thank you letter for both donations. Moved and seconded, we'll move. Ms. Grow, anything on the motion? I'm sorry, it's hard to keep up on the TV screen here, but if I'm ignoring you, please wave at me.
It's the price of being rewarded.
Okay. So seeing no more comment, I'll move to a roll call vote for 4.3, to accept the donation in the amount of $7,000, as detailed on the agenda. A roll call vote for this, Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Ms. Grow?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, it carries five, nothing. Moving on to 4.4, LaRusso Materials Corporation for acceptance by the board. LaRusso Corporation submitting annual tonnage royalty payment to the town. Mr. Mazuka or Mr. Rosen, any, this is something that we receive regularly. Anything to add regarding the submission by LaRusso of this royalty payment?
No, I can jump in, Mr. Chairman. It's an agreement between the town and LaRusso Corporation for their asphalt plant on Pleasant Street that a certain amount, based on their tonnage, would be donated to the town annually to be used for that road or if that bridge ever needed work. So the board accepts this annually, gets deposited to a specific gift account. I think the current balance is somewhere around the $200,000 mark, at least the last time I looked at it. We can pull money out of there maybe two or three years ago for some paving on the road. The process has always otherwise been to leave as much of it in there as possible for it.
Yeah.
Some point in time, that bridge is going to be replaced.
Any questions from the board regarding the royalty payment? Mr. Plasko?
I would just comment that LaRusso Corporation made this offer, an agreement with the town a number of years ago now, and every year it's sent in, and nobody has to go looking for it, nobody has to ask, or anyone has to send a reminder, that they just are loyal to their promise to the town, so thank them for that and make a motion to accept under 4453A for the purpose indicated.
I'll second.
Mr. Lane, seconded. Mr. Plasko's motion to accept the royalty payment from LaRusso Corporation. Any further comment, questions? Seeing none, I will proceed to a roll call vote. Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Ms. Grow?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes, it carries five, nothing. We have five minutes to our appointment. Can we move on to item 4.5 with the board's indulgence, or we could wait until later? This may require a few minutes of discussion. Let's just keep going. So, we have item 4.5 from the Town Clerk, Marilyn, Mary Lou Folon. This is the correspondence for approval of the board submitting a request to schedule a public hearing on February 11th, 2025, with regard to opting out of mail-in voting for the upcoming town election. Does the board have opportunity to read Ms. Folon's letter? I mean, basically, she's outlining some detail to have a hearing in February 11th for the consideration of mail-in voting, specific to the local election upcoming in April, as I understand it. Yes, Mr. Lane? Sorry.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with this. I think Ms. Folon has been doing this for a long time, and she makes a recommendation. It's a good one. But I was wondering, Mr. Mazuka, if you had any insight into why we're going down this path?
Sure. So a couple of things. One, all that's being requested tonight is that the board schedule a hearing and decide at that point, that's just the process the state has outlined. The early voting for the local election only, not only does it have a very low response rate, so we send out, I think it's something like 3,000 ballots, and we get back less than 1,000, it candidly leads to mass confusion among a lot of folks. The last time we did it, we were getting the question of, you know, "So how come I don't see Biden on here? How come I don't see Trump on here?" It's just because we have our local election cycle, like most towns have an off-cycle, it creates a lot of additional work, confusion among the public, and hasn't proven to actually impact our voter rates in any way. So the process, the thought was, you know, is you're really a value doing it for the early voting for the local election only. So I want to be clear, should the board schedule the hearing, have the hearing, decide not to do it, this is just for the local election. This has no impact on state and federal elections.
And I was...
Local opt-out for local elections.
Sorry, Mr. Mazuka. So I would assume there's some cost savings associated with this?
Correct, thousands of dollars. We end up sending out a lot, and then the staff time is significant.
Right, okay. Mr. Sad?
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Manager, I haven't got a problem with it. The only question I have is that, maybe for people, if they ask for absentee ballot, that we put a little ad in the paper or something, just to remind them that it's available.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Plasko?
I just remind that we're not being asked to vote on the issue tonight.
Just a scare.
Just being asked to set up a hearing. I know philosophically, I start out with some concerns. Mary Lou Folon is somebody who I'd probably give almost anything to that she asks for, but on this one, I'm really thinking about it. I've asked her, and she gave me some numbers, and I think we'll wait to hear, I'm willing to wait and hear what happens at the hearing, so I'm willing to have the hearing, but I need a sales pitch.
Understood, understood. So it seems to be that the, Ms. Grow, I'm sorry, anything to add? I'm sorry.
No, I think the manager laid out what the request is pretty clear. None of those are so pretty clear. So like most of your Plasko, I'm interested to see what comes out of here.
Yes, Mr. ...
Do you need a motion to schedule the hearing?
I think we should take a motion to schedule a hearing for February the 11th.
In accordance with Justice for a Little State's...
In accordance with the letter provided by Ms. Folon.
So moved.
We'll proceed, and do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Sad will take your second. On the motion to schedule an appointment with the Town Clerk for February the 11th, on the motion, Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Ms. Grow?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes, so Ms. Would I work with you to set the agenda for the February 11th and communicate the details to Ms. Folon? Yes. And hopefully, she will not come in with a list of things for Mr. Plasko to ask for. Very well. Why don't we do one more item, and then we'll proceed to our seven o'clock appointment. Item 4.6 is our monthly new business article for cemetery deeds for the signature of the board. The pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
We have a motion to sign and approve, seconded by Mr. Lane. We'll proceed to roll call vote. Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Sad? Ms. Grow?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. That carries five, nothing. All right. With that, we are now ready to proceed to our next item, item 3.1, I'm sorry, 3.2, seven o'clock appointment with Attorney Phil Mackey and Mr. Corrigan, too, or just you, Mr. Mackey?
I expect it's going to be just...
Okay. This is for the proposed development. If there are, Mike, if there are folks in the... If there are, Mike, if there are folks in the, in the hallway who are here specifically to hear the presentation, we should invite them in.
I'm gonna come in, this is just for record.
Oh, thank you.
I guess, trying to fill in some seats.
Thank you very much, yes.
I have an extra chair here.
For the file.
I have two chairs back here.
No.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll talk to them.
We can also pull a chair from here, if necessary. And there'll be extra chairs at table. If someone wants to just, Steve, you wanna just pull it by the door? Or there you go. All right. Good evening. Mr. Mackey, before, before you start your presentation, just maybe I'll make a couple of preliminary comments, just to orientate us in terms of where we are in the process regarding this proposal. We did meet with Mr. Mackey and Mr. Corrigan on September the twenty-fourth at a public hearing, and at that time, you received a public input, also input from the board itself, and with the request that you would take that input and return to us in, in, in due time to bring back any, any changes and revisions to the proposal that was made in September the twenty-fourth. So, the twenty-fourth of September was a public hearing. Tonight is not a public hearing. We can talk a little bit at the end in terms of what the next steps in the process, but everyone is invited to certainly take in the presentation, understand where it is, and listen to our comments and feedback. We appreciate your attending this evening. So, with that, and, and by the way, this is a, this is in relation to the local initiative program application that is being pursued by the developer, represented by Mr. Mackey, for the development of an affordable housing development located at nine twenty through to nine twenty-nine Washington Street. So, I'm gonna be quiet now, Mr. Mackey, and allow you to get us up to date in terms of what is, what you and the developer have spoken about, and come back to us with, since your meeting on the twenty-fourth of September.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Phil Mackey, 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 twelve fifty-six Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts, as counsel for and on behalf of Corrigan Development. Unfortunately, Mr. Corrigan cannot be with us, so I, I get the hot seat for the, for the evening. So, per your introduction, Mr. Chairman, you gave us a lot of homework, there was a lot of input, and we took it to heart. So, basically, as you can see on the screen or the handouts, the building looks very different than what was initially proposed and then what was re-proposed in September. It is still, it's a three-story building, it's not a four-story building. We have made the facade as similar to the condos that are on the other side of the gas station as we could. They're not gonna be identical, but they will, the goal being is that there's a common scheme in that section of Washington Street. We have reduced the number. I think last time, we were in the thirties, we are now down to twenty-six, which was the guidance that this board gave us. And you can see the, the spread. We have ones, twos, and threes, pretty even across the board, mostly twos, some threes, and a few ones. We have circulated the plans through the fire department and the building department, and I've given you the, the emails that basically said both of those two departments are good. Sarah has seen them in planning and development. Her only comment was that she believes that you have to have 25% affordable to qualify for the lip. I'm not sure if I agree with her or not, but to keep peace, my client has authorized me to just go with 25%, because basically, if you do the numbers, 20% of 26 is 5.2, you round up, you're at 6. And 25% of 20, this is 7. And so, it is a difference of one unit, and that does not kill the project one way or another, as it is currently proposed. So, I think we can keep everybody happy, at least within the, the building administratively. We can flip through this in a second, but basically, the only other item is some of the units are slightly smaller than what the DHCD regulations would like. We believe that they'll give us a waiver when we actually get to that point, but if not, we have asked our architect, and we provided you a letter from him stating that we can comply 100% with their square-footed regulations with keeping the plan basically as it is. So, as we move forward, assuming this board, I hope this board votes favorably and sends us to the state, the interior of the building may get tweaked a little bit, and of course, you know, we're gonna end up in the front of the zoning board, which may tweak the project additionally. But we can meet all of the requirements, and I would ask that we not go back for another planner vision based on that alone. So, that's basically where we are. A few other things we'll point out. If you would go to the second slide, please. It's kinda hard to see because of the scale, but we were able to push the building back about five feet, and we believe that will work as we go forward through the design process. It's not, it's...
Mr. Frans Rupke?
Yes.
What is that new total setback, do you know? What was it before?
It was basically zero, and now it's five.
Okay.
May I ask, so it's five feet setback from Washington Street. We received some input at the hearing regarding signage at the, at Mr. Frank's market. How, how does that comply with, or how does that?
So, the building will actually be five feet further back than it is currently today. So, one of his signs that is partially obscured should be completely not obscured, and the one that is totally obscured may be partially not obscured. So, his signage will be more visible as a result of this project than it is currently today.
Thank you. Could you continue, please?
Sure. I guess we'll just flip through the slides. Basically, these are the interiors. Again, as was proposed before, all of the dwelling units are on one floor, so we're gonna, three stories of those. So, if you could go through the next two, please. Next one, thank you. And one more. And it's just the roof. One more, please. Okay. And so, basically, the next couple we have are elevations as we go around the building. We committed to at least something that looks like brick. It may be siding that looks like brick, or it may be actual bricks, but red in color, black roof, with some white punctuation. And you can see the front and one of the sides there. The front, you can see is the, the top. You'll have an actual entryway in the middle. Sides, there are no direct access, at least not from that one. Next, please. And you then have the rear and the other side. And so, again, we've carried basically the red and the black and the white all the way around, so no matter what vantage point you're looking at, you're basically seeing a similar facade. And I think that was gonna bring us to the end.
That's the last one.
Yep, that is the last slide. So, we listened to everybody. It's not two single-family homes, as, as some of the neighbors had desired, and regrettably, that's just not what this project is going to be if Mr. Corrigan develops it. So, this is where we are. I do think we have come down considerably in unit count. We have pushed the building back, we have shortened the building, I guess that's what you'd call it. We've taken a complete story off, not just step back, there is no fourth story. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I am open to questions.
At this point, I'll open up questions from the board.
I guess I'll start first. Hi, Attorney Mackey.
Hello.
Couple of questions. Last time you and Mr. Corrigan were here, or Mr. Corrigan was here without you, thank you for making the look a little better versus the Norwood Hospital. I think if we can, well, we can't put the slide up unless with the, the size of the building, Mr. Mike? The building in comparison to the parking lot, the first slide.
Oh, I can go back, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's catching up.
No, one more, next one.
That's, that's the first, oh, one more, yeah.
Yeah, that one. Nope. I think personally, for the neighborhood and for the area, you're taking almost 50% of the landmass and making a building out of it. It's a pretty big building for that area, even though it's three stories. And when Mr. Corrigan was here, he gave us this developer experience, and I had mentioned that building would never be built in Dover or Medfield, at Medfield Meadows. I did some research, and the Medfield Meadows has 36 units on 2.93 acres of land, and I just think that's just too big. And what, what's happened is the same footprint as the last two meetings, but you've added three bedrooms. You've taken the third floor off, but now you have 10 three bedrooms, and before you had six. So, actually, you need 70 parking spots, I think by code. So, my, so I'm wondering how it came that you didn't shorten the building? You shortened it this way, but not this way for the neighborhood. It's still a big building. It looks beautiful because it's a picture, but if you look at that picture, you've got all asphalt, you've got a big building, you're five feet off the street, which is fine with me, but the building's too big for the neighborhood. I think the last time we were here, the neighborhood was crying that it's too big and too high. And my, my contention is, if you're pushing the snow up the hill to all those parking lots, which is 41 parking lots for that building, unless the board gives you a variance for 30 spots at least, I don't think it's gonna be fair to the neighborhood, because it's a busy, busy intersection right in front of you. Parking, so you did the 70 parking spot. Green space, you've taken away all the green space on the last print that we have here, the new print, and our, our current zoning is 10% green space. So, we have no trees, no green space, very little of just shrubs. Have a problem with that. My next question is, the, the strip on the zoning is 120 feet back, the general residence to the zoning of the business up the front?
Mm-hmm.
Do we know where that map is, and if, if it's not on the print? I think he's gonna need a variance for building in a G-zone, isn't he?
So, as, we basically need variances for everything.
Right.
But they don't call it that under 40B, which is the same 40B that everybody else thinks about. So, that's why we're here, under the local initiative program. If you, gentleman and lady, I forget, she's not here, but she's with us virtually, vote yes, then that gives the zoning board the authority to grant waivers to make the project work. They don't have to, but they have the authority to. And that also assumes we get through the state and get their letter of eligibility. If you don't vote yes, then this goes away. We have never once said that this can be built under 48 using the nor, normal zoning.
Okay. I just have a serious problem with the, the snow and runoff and coming down the street into that area. You have a lot of asphalt you're gonna add where the trees are there currently now, absorbing, absorbing the water. It's gonna be a lot of water coming into that intersection, and it's gonna be a real hazard. I don't know what you're planning to do to get that water and stuff from coming down the street into South Norwood.
They're gonna have to put it in underground galleys.
Underground galleys where?
Under the parking lot.
They're gonna pump it back up the hill?
Yeah, but it won't be up the hill. And we have to, regardless of whether the zoning board, again, I'm jumping ahead of our time, but if we get to the zoning board, regardless if they waive certain provisions of zoning bylaw, we have to meet stormwater management. That's not waverable, and so we have to keep our water on our site. It doesn't get to go to South Norwood. And the engineers will have to figure that out. And they will.
Okay. I guess you're gonna have to pump it up that hill, 'cause I know that land is up the hill, and that's a 10-foot slope going up that hill to the parking lot. Okay.
That's, that's on us.
So, we would need, well, I didn't say we needed tonight to, to vote on it, but I would think we'd have it, but I guess my question is, by law, I mentioned this last time with you and Mr. Corrigan, the two family in the Ambrose Press, which is an eyesore, we all know that, but the, the bylaw, the law right now is for two apartments and two commercial per lot, by right?
Correct.
I just think you're asking for a big, big building for the town in Norwood to absorb for, I don't know, the benefit of the, the developer making a huge profit. I really don't understand the profit that, I mean, the, the benefit that town has of this board to give you the permission to go forward with such a massive building with no green space, a water issue that we don't know what's gonna happen to it, and give you the green light to go ahead. So, I'm just having a hard problem with Mr. Chairman, and I'll leave my time open in case I have another comment. A few people, my senior members, think that this is a benefit for the town in Norwood to, the magnitude that's gonna impact the streets, the intersection, and the look of the South Node coming in and South Node going out. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sad. Any other comments from the board members? Mr. Lane?
The chair.
Okay.
No, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here, and thank you for the presentation. I wish the developer was here, I wish maybe the architect was here, I know that's out of your hands. So, I, you know, I appreciate that the, the unit count has come down, 'cause I think that was the most glaring thing initially. I know that that's kind of the game a little bit sometimes with developments, come in with a big number, and people, you know, the town might ask you to cut that down, but I, I do think it was an honest effort to, to get the unit number down. I think the thing that I struggle with most is the location. I just don't feel like it is a good spot for anything more than it is now, which is unfortunate because of the building that's there, the press. I mean, everyone knows that's, that's a huge eyesore, and I think it's even in worse condition today when I saw it than it was a month ago. So, now it feels like it's bordering on being a hazard. But, that being said, you know, you, is that outweigh the benefit of, of producing something here? So, I guess it's a long-winded way for me saying, you know, I lived on Chapel Street for 10 years, and that corner there is, is, is not good. And I just don't think that the, the entryway and the exitway for the people that would be living in this building where it built is only, it's one way in and one way out. And it's unfortunate that it's boxed in like that, but that's the reality of it. If there were options to, to exit a different way, not onto Washington Street, but really, if you're leaving there, and if there are 26 units and however many people that constitutes, if you're making a left turn out of there, you're, you're really crossing two lanes of southbound traffic. One from the Washington Street that would go up to Chapel Street, and then Washington Street, southbound, that would go down under the hill. I think that just seems like we're inviting an accident to happen. I think there was a gentleman here last time that said that he was in an accident within two weeks. And that's not, you know, the developer's fault, that it's just laid out that way, but I just think it, it's unfortunate, and I know that real estate and acquisition is a gamble, and that's, I'm sure, why they bought the property, 'cause they thought that you could get this many units out of it to make it work. But I just think adding more traffic in and out of that particular area isn't good for the neighborhood, and if this were across the street, what's the building? It's, it's literally like just a brick building on Washington, across from the condos, you know, where you go in next to the flooring of the place.
The Expo is, but it's up for sale now?
Yeah. Not the huge complex, but sort of...
The Science Center calls it something.
And it's right up against the sidewalk?
Exploration?
I'm not, you know, I'm sorry. My point is, like, if this were there on that side of the street, I would feel better about it and probably be in favor of it, but, you know, I do wanna see something go there. It's just, this isn't it, unfortunately. And I know that probably, if we don't get, if you don't get approval, the project goes away, and that eyesore remains for however many years, which is, you know, that's, it's not great, but I just can't justify approval just to get rid of an eyesore and bringing that kind of traffic to that particular area. Literally, if it were just, you know, a couple blocks down the street, I would, I think it'd kind of be a no-brainer, but just right where it's situated. And it's, I feel like it's too close to the gas station and the drive-through, and then, you know, you've got sort of the, the shadow that three stories would cast, and it's just, I don't know, it's, it's just not a good setup to me, and that's how I feel.
I think you're referring to the building next to Balboni's?
Yes, that's the one.
Yeah, the, um, red...
About the MGR, whatever the engineering, they built the building right up to the sidewalk?
Right, right. So, but, you know, and I appreciate everything, and it's been cordial, and I know that the, the developer has gotten feedback from us and from neighbors, so I think the process has been good.
Mr. Plasko? Mr. Plasko.
Thank you. Um, I had a lot of questions on this proposal and concerns. Probably the number-one concern was the traffic just brought up by Mr. Lane. And I ended up coming to the conclusion that be careful what you ask for, because if we say no to this development, there is a number of items I can think of quickly, not to be scare tactics, but a number of items by right that could be built there, that are going to produce much more traffic and much more serious of a problem or concern. So I've come to accept that. I looked at it closer where the rumble strip is, where the turns are. It's not as bad as what I originally felt. I'm still not a hundred percent comfortable with it, it's not ideal. But again, it's, in my opinion, much more preferable than the potential for other developments that eventually occur at this site. I think the developer has come around to meeting more of the standards that we need to meet the community need, to get rid of this blighted eyesore site, reduce the height that was a concern of ours, reduce the number of units that was a concern of ours, move back, I'm not sure if that's enough. I thought you already five-footed now, when you were talking, another five-foot, we're going to have a good clear ten feet. But, but you heard what the people said, what the board members said at that hearing, and you've taken those all into consideration. I think it meets most of the town's criterias for this type of a development. It's on the main bus line, it's on a public transportation line, it's not out in, you know, some residential neighborhood somewhere. There are residents here, obviously. We asked that it be able to more appropriately aesthetically pleasing its development, match as much as possible, or at least complement, I say, not match, the development on the opposite corner of Walnut Street, which they've done, I think, a beautiful job of. So I think it's come around. Is it a hundred percent perfect? No. Is it, is it much better than what's there and what might else be there? I believe so. I would be concerned with the fact that we do need to see that the unit is, meets all design standards, and today it does not, as you pointed out. And you do have a letter from the architect that guaranteeing that these adjustments, which are just a few feet here and there, can be made without any issue, which certainly I believe they can be, but it would be certainly a requirement. There is one other concern that still lingers, although Mr. Sad brought up, about the number of three-bedroom units. And I didn't realize until recently review that the number of three bedrooms did increase from previous presentation. And this site is a tight site for families. You know, there's no playground out there, there's no room, and that's likely who's going to be trying to occupy most of the three bedrooms. So I don't know that the site isn't a little tight for that particular type of development. If we could go back to the original six, eliminate three of the three bedrooms, make them twos and ones, I think it'd be a development that I'd have absolutely no problem with, because I think you've met the other criterias. We can set out the, the few points that are important to this board that they would approve, and I think the point that started to be made, I'd like to make it a little clearer at this point, is this is just that we find a generally suitable site for this project or this type of project. It then goes to the state Housing and Local Communities, the Executive Office of Housing and Local Communities, that reviews that it meets all the particular technical standards required, such as your plan for affordable housing and so forth, under a forty-B development. And if they find everything's in proper order, they'll give a letter of eligibility. That letter of eligibility, they can then go to the zoning board. The zoning board then has all to say. They can agree with the few things we said, approved of, and make other comments, like on the stormwater and all those type of issues, the landscaping, all that, that's their review in every development that goes through like that, like a forty-Bs. So this project would be no different than all the other projects that have gone through. And they can also then say, hey, we don't agree, we don't think this is right for this site, put this down, and they can say no. The say is at the zoning board, not at this board, the final say. We can stop it by not liking it at all. But if we think it has any potential whatsoever to be a decent project at this site as proposed, then we would give it the blessing, we would assign a letter of support, sign their application. They make a whole formal application that goes to the state, and then it goes the rest of the way, as I just indicated. At the state level, if they find in the review a need to suggest that there be some changes from what's submitted to them, they send it back to the developer and to this board to make sure we still agree with those changes. And we, so at that point, we can still say no, assuming there is no need for that kind of further review. It then goes to the state continues to decide, as I said before, whether or not to issue that letter of eligibility, and then with that letter of eligibility, what the developer proceeds to, presumably would, to the zoning board and go through the full process. But that's where the nitty-gritty of some of these issues will be taken care of. We need to be sure that it's of the right scale, the height compared to the other buildings in the area, the neighborhood characteristics versus putting it out in the middle of a hundred percent one-bedroom, uh, one single-family house development somewhere, whether that's appropriate for multi-family housing development or not. You know, on our housing production plan, the sound housing production plan, we called for development of the Washington Street corridor, the commercial areas of town with mixed use, and that's commercial use and housing. And because it's along the public transportation routes, it was strongly recommended that it be done with forty-R, which is similar to forty-B in many ways, as far as affordable requirements and so forth. So, the long-winded story is, I would be ready to make a motion if there was support to support the letter, the application with caveats, that a plan come back that with, does not expand the footprint, that reduces three bedrooms by three, that ensures that the twenty-five percent affordability is in perpetuity, that the exterior facade be brick and white trim, and um, I'm not sure if I'm missing anything, but basically, those are the only basic comments that we would have on the project and conditions on the projects. The affordability, the number of units, the size of the, the size of the complex, of the buildings on the site, and, and then a yes or no in favor of it. I could go along with the twenty percent as a trade-off. I know town planner, Trinity Director has said that she thinks it's only twenty-five percent. I'm not sure I agree with that, but DHCD would decide that in one way or the other anyhow. The law itself, which have a copy of here right here, talks about twenty-five percent of the units, or twenty percent. If there are fifty percent of the area median income instead of eighty, the fifty, the twenty-five percent is at eighty percent of the area median income. And it goes on to say, if fewer than the aforementioned percentage of the units in the development are so restricted, that only those units count, what it says is the twenty-five percent or the twenty percent gets you one hundred percent, so you can count all twenty-six units towards SHI. Another example of that is the state in two thousand twenty developed four hundred, four thousand two hundred ninety-five total units under the LIP program. Three thousand one hundred thirty-four were local action units, one thousand one hundred sixty-one were LIP forty-B units, six hundred ninety-two were affordable units. That's sixteen percent, and that is what the state approves. Obviously, they approved something lower than twenty-five percent. The state also, the local action units are, one example, what a local action unit would be in the town of Norwood is the new three-A zoning. Those units built under that are local act, that are affordable, that the town could claim, are local action units. They, state regulations don't allow you to use more than ten percent, less than the twenty or the twenty-five, unless you do a certain math formula and they approve, and even then, it's capped at twenty percent, not twenty-five. So I think there is leeway there. What worse would happen is we approve it at that number, the state turns it back, like I said, at that, that review, and then the developer has to decide whether he'll change or not, and we have to decide whether to accept it or not. So I don't think it does any harm to go to the twenty percent if that's what it takes. But since your client has already indicated twenty-five percent, I thank him for that, it makes it a lot easier for everybody. But I do disagree with that connotation that we have to stick to the twenty-five. We may want to stick to the twenty-five if we were looking to meet the forty-B requirements, but we don't have to meet the forty-B requirements as we've got the one-point-five percent of land area, and with all the units that are in the pipeline, as soon as a few more are built, we'll have the ten percent as well. So we don't have to be over-restrictive about what we want there. So long and short of it, Mr. Chairman, we would need to take the moment to do a vote with the right details in it, but if there's support based on the size, skill, and concept of what they are proposing here, I could support it.
Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I ask a quick, quick question, Mr. Plasko? You had indicated, you know, if this weren't recommended to move forward to the next stage, that in your opinion, maybe something else could or would be built? Did you say that at one point?
If we say no...
Yeah.
They can't go any further.
Right.
Either they, or somebody they sell it to is going to do something with this property.
Right.
That's not like a stand there as a monument for life.
Sure.
The gentleman who would have done that, since passed away. So by right, it's, it's general business.
Right.
So everything you see downtown, sub-shops, hairdresses, they could have a mix where, where they have not very many units, I'm not sure they count, but they could do some units housing up above and still have something like a sub-shop down below.
A mixed use?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the traffic from most of the commercials ideas...
Would that be by right?
Would exceed, I believe, the traffic issues that may come from all residential.
And you think if a proposal like that would be by right?
Yes.
Yeah. And that is like the downtown or the district, sort of the same thing?
Well, you have to see the exact proposal to see if it's by right, but the zoning allows the mixed use like that, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Mr. Lane?
No, no, I'm just kind of thinking of, I mean, if someone could have done that, then they might have done it already, right?
If they could have?
Right.
Well, the previous owner had no inclination to do anything.
Yeah.
And he only just recently passed away, and these gentlemen bought it. After they go, they either decide to do something else with it, or they sell it, and who knows what comes forward.
Yeah.
Ms. Crowe, any comments, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm in alignment with Mr. Plasko's views around it. I tend to be, I don't like to let perfect be the enemy of the good. I do feel like they've made significant headway on a lot of the changes that were asked by the board, by the community, and trying to cover the signage, trying to change it to fit more of the look of the neighborhood, bringing the height and units down. And traffic was one of my concerns. I spent a lot of time over there thinking about this project, driving over there. I had business in that part of town throughout the winter, so I was constantly in and out of there. It was, like Mr. Plasko, it wasn't as bad as I thought, like when you look at an aerial view of the one or two times I've been through there, but actually physically going into one of the adjacent, or not adjacent, the neighboring properties, going in and out of there, it wasn't the neat marriage move that I thought it would be. And that was even closer to the island and all of that fun stuff, so this is further away than that. And like Mr. Plasko says, if anything else comes in there that's not residential, such as a fixed use, you're going to have the constant in and out of the people using whatever the first floor business is. When it comes to individual unit use by people, right now, you have a lot more people working from home, you have a lot of people that are starting to lean into transit, so that kind of changes the footprint of traffic in and out of the site to the degree that I'm willing to live with essentially. It's not great, it's not the best, but it's enough that I don't think that, I don't think it would behoove us to say no, knowing the other kinds of things that could be built right behind it without, you know, by right. So I am in the same general plot pattern as Mr. Plasko on this project.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. I will note that Mr. Mackey just did hand me at the beginning of the session three letters, and I'll just review them very quickly. For the record, Mr. Plasko made reference to the letter from Winslow Architect. The architect proposed multi-family housing development. We understand that a comment has been made that the state regulations require a minimum size of seventy square foot for one-bedroom apartments and nine hundred square feet for two-bedroom apartments. We want to confirm, we will guarantee that all units in this project will be at least, meet those minimum area requirements, and frankly, hopefully, will exceed them as the plans are more fully developed. And that's submitted by John Winslow, a Winslow applicant. From Gary Pelletier, the building inspector, the plans matched, you know, the plans look great, redesign will match the neighborhood nicely, building continues support, building continues to support the redevelopment plan. That's the gist of that. And we also have a letter from Deputy Chief John Cody, the Fire Department. Norwood Fire is good with the proposed plan, so those are just for the record. You know, I compliment the developer for listening to the input that was received at the nine-twenty-four hearing. You've come back with a smaller building in terms of height, and certainly you've reduced, you have reduced from forty-two to thirty-two, then now the twenty-six, your unit count. I, Mr. Plasko made reference to this in terms of the number of units, one versus two versus three. So as your twenty-six units total, it's, as it's construed now, it's four one-bedrooms, twelve two-bedrooms, and ten three-bedrooms. So, Mr. Plasko, if I could just indulge you for a minute, you made a comment regarding consideration to perhaps changing that mix? It's a condition?
Yes. I would recommend going back to the last plans that we saw, that were six units for three bedrooms, and therefore would be eliminating three that's presented in these plans here tonight dated December second, twenty, not twenty-twenty-four.
That, that's fine. I just ask that you limit the threes, and we'll figure out the mix of the ones and twos.
I'm just wondering if, if you were to, to change the mix from the three-bedroom units to a lesser amount, does, does that impact the scale of this building? Is it, is it, do we have...
I don't think it's going to impact it significantly. I mean, the first thing that's going to happen is the undersized units become full-size units. And by wiping out three bedrooms, that's most likely where we're going to get the space. All of the units aren't undersized, there's only one or two. So if I take three bedrooms away, three, one bed, if I remove three three-bedrooms and make them one or two, that gives me three or six, depending on which it ends up being.
You're not increasing the number of units, so it's still restricted to total twice?
Right. Now, I'm not asking for extra units, I'm just saying, tell, cap the threes, and then let us figure out the ones and twos underneath that.
My question has to do with whether there's any opportunity in reconfiguring the bedroom mix, that this, the broadness of the building, can it be modified through this process? To bring it further from the, the... To bring it further from the border of the adjacent property on the right in particular?
I can't tell you that. I would think so, but I'm not the architect. So we would have to ask him what that does. The first thing we have to do is make sure all of the exist of the twenty-six, some have to get actually larger to make the D H C D guidelines. So that's the first thing that happens. And then if there's extra space left out, or does it really change the footprint, or do we just get slightly even larger one-bedrooms or two-bedrooms? I don't know.
I think it's a good suggestion. What's, what's, what I'm thinking of is that I'm concerned that, to that point, that I would benefit to see the architect's opinion in terms of how that changes the building's scale and scope. And I don't know whether or not that is something that the board would agree to anyways, but I don't know whether or not there's an opportunity for the architect to quickly look at that and come back to us with another redesign of the plan based on that new mix of building. Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, we certainly can wait for the architect to like, or is it a desire to move the building?
We, I think we got a lot of input from the public, public in terms of height and broadness of the building. And I think the redesign that's before us today has, has done a really good job with the height element. And I'm just wondering whether there are further opportunities to bring the broadness of the building in, in similarly, you moved it back from the, from the street by five feet. I'm just curious as to whether or not these changes in bedroom mixes, or can the architect come up with something that reduces it? And I don't believe we'd be asking for something that would be terribly less broad, but at least a few more feet on either side to reduce the broadness of the building, which we have got some input regarding the broadness and the height. We took care of that.
The gas issue would be nice. It may be possible to move a couple of feet. I don't think it would change a lot, but we may be wrong because you do have to make some significant changes unless you want all the units to be really large, which is an option. But if you're actually going to reduce the sizes, but I guess the point I want to make is it may be doable, and you may be able to do it with the same restriction as far as the same number of units and all that, but it's going to have to till the redesign. The length of the hallways and width of the hallways will decide. And then the, remember the design standard, like we just said, that in the architect's order, the sum of units is too small. They have to be at least a certain size, so he can't reduce the size to accommodate the look for us. So the architect would have to work at it. It might be interesting because a couple of feet on that side, it's always been tight to that line, would be nice. But if it couldn't, I'd still support it because of all the reasons I said earlier, but it might be nice to see that, too, if that could, is a possibility.
Mr. Chairman, can I jump in for a second? Some of the things that I just want to throw out there, being in the real estate business, mixed use, Mr. Matt Lane, Matt, mixed use, if they want to put mixed use there with offices or retail, there's no parking out front. So they'd have to put a parking lot like in St. Catherine's or out back. And for commercial, unless it's an office, they're not going to go out back. Second thing is, I still come from the fact that the neighborhood should have a say in this. I don't think they're aware of what's going on in their neighborhood. I think if you cut off the whole right side, Attorney Mackey, of this building, and shorten it by six, and come in with twenty at three floors and make it nice like you've done, I think it might be beholden to these neighbors and the butters. I just think it's a, it's a huge building. I think it's a crazy, you have no parking for guests, it's, there's no parking out front, you've got a huge building that's going up like on Everett Street across from Rose Court. I think it's just going to kill the whole Ward District. It's going to set the precedent for the next developer to come in and say, I don't need parking, I don't need green space, I don't need water, I have water that can go down the hill, and how are they going to do it without a major rainstorm? How much it's going to contain, we don't know. I, I, that's my, my opinion. I just think it's the wrong building for the wrong neighborhood, and if it's up front, five feet, maybe you can go back ten feet, more green space. Take off the whole right side, those two units per floor, and get twenty units. I mean, that's, it's in our game. I don't want it to go out of this building. I want us to decide, not the Board of Appeals. They had not had enough time with Pendergast Circle. You know, our job is to be leaders in this town, we have to do that. And these people, they're going to suffer.
Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, I would just say that some of, some of those comments I certainly agree with, it would be nice if units went away, but they also, as you know, have a business expense to look at, and whether it's going to be profitable. And they can look at it and accommodate it and come back so that we say yes, or if they can't, then we go back to the other situation, what else is going to go in there, which we don't know. As far as it seeming like it's bad, it's, we ask them to kind of complement the opposite corner. The opposite corner is only a couple of feet setback from the, from the drive, from the sidewalk. The opposite side has no parking in the front, all the parking is in the back. The opposite side has less parking than this has, it's a much smaller site than this site is. So I, I think when you get out of the emotion and look at the facts and the details, it works as well or better than across the street. I originally had concerns that it was a split lot and that you couldn't do a lot of this, but then I read the town zoning by Warren Howard handles split lots, and that takes away that, you have that, able to use that for the parking for those purposes, so we don't have an issue. And that would be the same thing with the commercial use. In fact, the commercial use may be pushed back with parking in the front, and then you got that eyesore as well, you know?
I understand, Mr. Chairman, Bill's coming from, but on the other unit, the Batucas Zone, who I knew pretty well, and there's twenty-seven, there's twenty-seven thousand square feet on thirteen units, too affordable, but it's a flat lot, there's streets around it, it's not, there's no, there's parking out in front of their buildings, where this one has no parking.
There's no parking out in front of that, it's right on the main street.
Yeah, but I'm saying they're parking around here and in the back of it, on, not Weld Street, what's that street there, goes?
Press Ave.
Press Ave. So they have parking there.
Yeah, Press Ave, excellent, Press Ave.
Yeah, one of those streets there. But they have, it's a flatter area versus thirty-seven thousand square feet. And it's, it's a different animal, it's condos versus apartment. I just think that that's a bad corner, there's no open space, we're tarred and everything. I just think it's a bad look for Norwood. I think if they want to come back and get maybe twenty or eighteen units, shorten the building, the envelope, I think they can look our way, maybe, and neighbors will support it, but I just have a hard sell with this thing. But it's up to the other four members.
Any final comments? I know we're running late for a water rate hearing. I, my, my comments would be that I think you've come a long way. I think there is benefit to the town for the affordable units at twenty-five percent. I compliment you for getting there. You've made some, some, a project that is more eye appealing, less height. Still have some concerns regarding the broadness of the, of the, of the building. But I think at this point, I think we've heard everyone out, and I'm going to ask Mr. Plasko if he could restate the motion that you had previously made with the specific conditions that were, if that's possible, Mr. Plasko?
Well, I don't know if you want to see if that flies, or if you want to table it for more information that you are interested in.
I mean, I, I would, I know it's, it's, I only would, and I know you're the attorney, and I don't expect you'll have the answer to this. I mean, I would like to see what the, what could be done with the, with the mix of bedrooms, and what impact, if any, could that have on the broadness of the building? And is it possible for your architect to return to us on January twenty-eighth with that detail? You'll have to check with the architect.
He can be here, but I can have an answer for you for all of those questions.
On the twenty-eighth?
Whether it's myself and Mr. Corrigan presenting, or the architect actually here. But we can absolutely relook the plan and answer all those.
And I would make a motion to table until the twenty-eighth? Oh, is it the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
It's our next meeting.
And take the matter up at that, at that time.
Do I have a second on Mr. Plasko's motion?
I think it's time to put the motion in order, too, sort of it goes forward.
Yes, so the motion, this would allow us to put together a proper motion as well as review the discussed changes in bedroom mix and potentially size and scope of the, of the building. Mr. Plasko's made the motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Grow. Roll call vote on the motion.
On the motion?
Yes, Mr. Lane?
So we're voting to table this for two weeks, at which point we take a vote on some of these changes.
Yes.
So the, the outcome is whether we support the project as a LIP or not, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's, and this has been referenced earlier, as you know, our role is to submit a letter of support. We're not permitting, we're not the permitting agency, we're not the one that can give you the zoning relief that's required, but this allows you to apply to the state for the application for the LIP, and then the state will take it over from there, working with the Z B A for further public hearings.
Do you want to spell out certain requirements to the developer that they know those have to be included? I'm not sure what your question was.
No, I'm, I'm just more interested in the process. It just feels like we're going to be in the same place in two weeks, and they're...
We will.
Yeah.
I think the chairman's looking for a little more information, so if he's ready to vote tonight, I'll make a motion, but otherwise, it might be good to have the additional information.
That is my position.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want, we don't want to take a conditional vote.
Yeah, no, I guess that's what it is, yeah, okay.
We may not be in another place in two weeks.
Oh, you may not.
But we may, we, it remains to be seen, but I believe that two weeks on the twenty-eighth is, is not a long timeframe for us to consider this information and come forward with a fully documented motion at that time. Mr. Mackey? We'll take a roll call vote. I do believe we had a second.
Yes.
So thank you, Mr. Rosen. On the motion to table until the meeting of January twenty-eighth, Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko? Mr. Sad?
On the motion, I'd like to amend it. I'd like to amend it that we'd ask them to come back with twenty units and cut that whole right side off and see if that's feasible for them.
He's heard all those comments. He's going to come back with what he thinks, and we're going to say yes or no.
Okay. I'll withdraw that amendment.
But he, he knows the concern of whether he wants to address it or not.
I'm taking my senior member's moments here, okay?
So on Mr. Plasko's motion to table?
Yes.
And Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so it's five, nothing. We'll see you back here on the twenty-eighth, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, I know that's a lot more time. Thank you, folks, for attending tonight. No, this is not a public hearing, but you know, you can talk to any of us post-meeting, and there will be, assuming this, this is a process that's approved through the LIP process, there will be further public hearings at Z B A level down the line, so it's not the end of the, of the, of the process. And, and, you know, we didn't schedule this as a public hearing, and at this point, we're twenty-five minutes beyond our, our public hearing that was scheduled for seven-thirty, so with that, we, we motion to table, and we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Governor. Is this another building?
Bill, just take one and pass it down. Bill, take one.
Gentlemen, we apologize for the delay in the public hearing. That took us a little longer than we expected. Very well, so at this point, at this time, we are now convening for our seven-thirty public hearing on water and sewer rates. Ms. Woodward, would you kindly read the public meeting notice?
The Board of Selectmen acting in their capacity as water and sewer commissioners for the Town of Norwood has the authority pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty and Section Nine, to conduct the public hearing on Tuesday, January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, beginning at seven-thirty P M. in the Harry Brothers Sutland Chambers, five sixty-six, Washington Street, North Massachusetts, to see what water rate and sewer rate it will set for March twenty-twenty-five for the Town of Norwood.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. Who's going to be the main speaker tonight? Jeff, while I ask you to introduce the team, and then we'll, we'll proceed to the, to the...
Yeah, sure.
So Jeff O'Neil, Director of Finance, Town Accountant for the town.
Mark Ryan, Director of Public Works, Town Engineer.
I'm Joe Collins, I'm the Economic Development Director for the town.
Welcome, everybody. So we're here for the water rate hearing, and as I understand it, you, you have some presentation details to show us? If I could indulge us with your presentation, the floor is yours.
All right, so I'll start off with the first couple of slides. The first one, we're looking at water consumption, which is information that the N W R A provides us. FY twenty-four was a relatively, we didn't consume a great deal of water, which did result in a lower, lower revenue than normal, but this year we have picked that back up, and we're up on just about four point seven-one percent through the first six months of the year. That, along with the rate increases from August, we have seen an increase in revenues, five point five percent when, when meter fees are, are included, and five point eight percent when meter fees are not included.
We should move to the next slide.
Overall, things have looked much better than the previous fiscal year. The table shows, basically, if we were to not increase revenue, starting in May, we should end up, we should end the year with a small surplus, which still doesn't quite get us where we want to be in terms of the trained earnings balance, but it's still much more positive than the last fiscal year.
And by the way, members are welcome to, as the gentleman are going through their slides, to post questions. We can wait to the end. I think, I think it works best if we can post questions as we go along. Ms. Grow, you just let me, just chime in if you have a question, because I can no longer see you on the screen.
No problem.
Okay.
All right, next slide, Mike. Yep, just one more. So future budget considerations, each of us will have one or two on this list. So N W R A assessments, they go up every single year. N W R A water is wonderful, but it is, it does cost money to produce that, as well as to ship it all the way up to Norwood, as well as the sewer system itself. This past year, we had a pretty low increase, largely because of the water, water that we consumed in FY twenty, calendar year twenty-twenty-three was considerably low, but we always expect that to increase between two and a half to three percent every year at least. Home Market Foods, it's wonderful having them in town. In FY twenty-four, the revenue we collected for Home Market Foods represented about, just about eight percent of all receivables for the Water and Sewer Fund. That's wonderful, but when they do have operational challenges, like they did last year, they had a few small shutdowns, that did impact revenue for the town. Then I'll let Mark Ryan handle the next one.
Just basically on that point, so if Home Market Foods, eight percent of our revenues, if they're...
on a lower end of 10%. On a normal fund, a normal enterprise fund, they're looking at two to three months of earnings, but I think if you look in the future, we'll see our collection rates are fairly, fairly high, so I don't think we need to go higher than that. So I've proposed a 10%, and that will be in all the rate structures that we have, is to get to that 10% retained earnings, which will help us mitigate any revenue fluctuations, any unexpected large increases in costs, breakages, or something like that, and also allow us some, a little bit of flexibility to start analyzing some capital projects as they may come down the road.
So retained earnings, is that the Water Enterprise version of free cash?
Correct, it'll be free cash fund balance, yes.
And the next one is weather impacts. As we've learned, weather plays a huge role in the amount of water that the town as a whole consumes. In calendar year 2022, the weather was, particularly this summer, was very dry, and we experienced incredibly high water usage, and revenues were quite high as a result. Calendar year 2023 was the exact opposite. A pretty wet summer, significantly lower water usage, that also resulted in a lower MWRA assessment going into FY '25, but it did result, also resulted in significantly less revenue than we were expecting. So with that, that's another benefit of having a healthy retained earnings balance. Go into, you know, the next year, we're a little bit low, for example, because of the weather. That might be able to save us from, you know, making a significant rate increase next year.
I think it's important to note, last year, we did see a $800,000 excess expenses over revenues, so we did have a fund balance, so we were able to support that. We don't need a general fund subsidy, so that, again, that's the focus coming forward, is to ensure that that's covered.
Mr. Plasko?
I'm sorry if you said it, and I missed it, but the general retained earnings out was able...
10%? 10% of what?
10% of your overall expenditures.
Okay.
So the 22 million.
In the event, and I believe this happened to us, in the event that we did not have high, there have been instances where, not in your tenure, Mr. O'Neill, but if Mr. Bazooka will remind me, I can recall at least one instance, as when I was on the FinCom, that it's unusual, but we did have to tap into the general fund's free cash account to pay for, to move money from that into the water account, because I believe we had issues with the rate revenue with that particular year. That's probably corrected mostly by the establishment for the Water Enterprise Fund, but I think it's important to note, I think you, I just heard you say that, that retained, having a healthy retained earnings helps prevent us from having to tap into the general fund if we have that occurrence in the future.
That's correct, and again, going through, yeah, going through the year-end process with DOR, you know, if we did have that deficit, they would most likely recommend a general fund subsidy to cover that deficit.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Sad?
Just how much are we getting extra on the changes in the water meter fees? I thought it was like, well, I went...
Just tell me what you think, is it for this year, fiscal year '25?
In terms of the change, the rate change?
Yeah, the rate, I mean, the amount of money, volume.
In terms of the water meter fees, it's not going to be substantial.
Okay.
It is important to know, and I know this has come up in the past, though, just to make sure that everybody understands, this fund is incorporating all revenues and all expenses for the water source. There are no other funds, water meter fees, everything's going into this account.
And tonight, we're looking specifically at rates, though, but not...
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one of the items, oh, excuse me.
Mr. Ryan?
One of the budget considerations also up there on that slide is the lead service line replacement. You know, the EPA has mandated all public water suppliers to identify the water service pipe material into each property, and we've been doing that for the last two years. We've been fortunate enough to get some grants from the Clean Water Trust. In October of '24, we submitted our inventory of all the water services in town. We have approximately 5,000 unknown material types, based on records. Most of them are black iron pipe, which is not an issue. There are some lead service lines out there, we believe, and so the next three years, we're going to be spending a considerable amount of time and money trying to identify those remaining 5,000 unknowns, and then we'll have to develop a plan down the road to start replacing them, be it the town pays for that, the property owner pays for that, or a combination of both.
These are the lines from, that lead into the properties, bringing water into the property from the distribution on the street level?
Correct, goes from the water main to the water meter, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lane, you had a question or a comment?
Thank you, yeah, thank you for being here. I had a question about, and some of this relates back to the memo or the, that we received in November from you, Mr. Collins. You know, with water leakage analysis, and one of the things you had cited is that one of the causes of this gap, for lack of a better term, town's been forced to estimate thousands of bills during this period, likely affecting the ability to collect because of the failure of these MTUs, right? But then, if you look at the budget, the proposed budget, the particular line item for meters is cut by a pretty significant amount, $400,000, so it just seems like, and definitely feel free to explain this, but it feels like if that's one of the causes why we're not pulling in as much revenue as we could, or a more accurate picture of revenue, that we're taking away the ability to fund the replacement of those meters, which seems sort of counterintuitive.
Yeah, well, we actually have some good news there. The number of estimated accounts has actually fallen to 919, which is a considerable reduction. So that's one reason we've, and also the budget that you're looking at is just a preliminary change.
Yeah, I know, I know that, yeah.
But that's one way we were actually able to reduce that overall, actually, just a few line items together, but that's one reason we might be able to make that reduction. And also, on the same slide, there's another bullet point versus changes to meter fees. As we start getting close, mostly because of DBWs doing a great job of replacing a lot of those MTUs, we might be looking at, the board might have an option of reducing the meter fee to put it in line with more of a regular replacement schedule versus what DBWs do now.
Playing catch-up now, if you know. So if we get to a point where we've replaced the majority of these, what's the shelf life, like 10 years or something like that?
Between 10 and 15 years, yeah.
And then we can do a better job planning, that's kind of what you're saying, right? And then the byproduct of that would be a lower fee potentially for residents. It's like, what is it a month now? Six? 626. 626. Yeah, something like that. So potentially, if we get to a better place with these replacements, we can potentially lower that.
And I think that line item that you mentioned, Mr. Lane, is, it goes down to 600,000, that's because of the work that's been done. That would expect to decrease, and we've probably looked on average, what, 10% a year? Somewhere around there, around 10% a year of that number. So that number will go down over the next couple of years as well, as we get the full meter replacement.
Because you'll have all these new units.
Correct.
And then that, whatever, so then, okay, so then the revenue number would come down too then, right? If we're asking...
So you won't need as much of an increase, correct.
Right.
Exactly, so again, planning for the longer term to try to smooth out that revenue, yes.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. I think I'm going to have another question or two, so...
No problem. Thank you. Continue, please.
And at the next slide, actually, Mark, we actually have some other great news about leakage, because that was a show of much, much more in-depth examination in the last few years versus mine, which was just month by month for one year. Next slide.
So Mr. Chairman, we're talking about unaccounted water, so, you know, we have the water coming in from the MWRA. A lot of it is billed, but a lot of it, we just can't identify, so we figure out where is that water going. We do analysis each year. Work with the fire department, every time they operate hydrants, we have to identify how long they operate a hydrant, what size nozzle, you know, the pressure area there, so we can determine the amount of gallons used. If there's a large-scale water main break, we can identify pretty accurately the amount of water lost during that time by looking at the, what we call the SCADA system, basically the data collection system back at Public Works. We've got water main cleaning and lining, where a lot of water is used for flushing of the water mains after they're cleaned and lined, and, you know, bypass up there, so we take that into account. But eventually, you come up with a number where you just don't know where that water is. And the American Water Works Association recommends a figure under 10%. We're, we've been making great progress on that, but in 2022, we did have a number that was significantly higher than we expected, it was 13.5%, and to us, that meant there's a leak out there. And each year, we do leak detection, we hire a firm, and that comes, you know, goes townwide and looks for leaks through an elaborate modeling system and computer system, but sometimes they just don't show up. And so when we got this number of 13.5%, we proceeded to go out there and do it on our own, and we located two leaks that were significant, and that shows in the following year, we only had a unaccounted water number of 7.6%.
So that looks like an aberration, as you described, but, you know, looking at '18, '19, '20, where you're at 9.5, up to a high of 11.7, calendar year '23 at 7.6, I'm going to conclude that this is probably one of the benefits of the relining project?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, the cleaning and lining, you know, these water main pipes have joints every so often, the joint material in there has corroded, if I may say, and so water is leaking out, little by little, and if you have 119 miles of water main, that's going to add up over time. Now you put in a seamless liner in there, that eliminates those leaks, so you're going to see that numbers, we believe, in that 7%, 6% in the future.
7.6% in 2023 means that there were 76% of water costs that we paid the MWRA, but we didn't use.
Correct.
We've got to account for it.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
So I guess the rest of what we have to present are the various options. We have three to present. I think the first one is we do nothing, there's no rate increase. As Mr. Collins mentioned, we project that we'll end the year with a slight surplus, but we will be going into fiscal year '26 with a necessary rate increase. Based on the projections, you know, I have that number around 8.5% is what we would need, and again, that's to cover all expenses and get us up to that 10% fund balance to protect us in the longer term.
Is the no rate increase, not doing a rate increase now, is the issue more that we would not be able to generate a surplus that would really get you to that retained earnings? But what impact would it have on the day-to-day operations? Would we have an impact on our ability to service the system?
No, there would be no impact to operations. This is just...
So basically, it's retained earnings?
It's, well, it's cover costs, it's not just retained earnings, but we're going to, so we'll be looking at a July increase as a necessary item.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Plasko?
Am I missing up slides or misunderstanding something? I think Mr. Collins indicated that right now, anticipated modest $38,000 something on the plus side.
Yes.
That's if we don't do anything.
Correct.
So that's pretty scary, because just a slight error and...
Well, I guess, remember, that's an addition to...
...anticipated.
Yeah, but that's also an addition to our current $800,000 retained earnings balance.
I'm sorry?
We have $800,000 right now as a retained earnings balance, so that $38,000 would add to that. So we would have $838,000 at fiscal year end in a fund balance.
But you would still be under the target recommended by the county?
Well, under the target.
So that'd be $838,000, not $38,000?
Correct, $38,000 is just for this fiscal year's surplus.
Profit. Last year, we lost $800,000.
But, so going back, so we had $1.6 million prior to that, because we moved all of the expenses and all of the projects into the enterprise fund.
Yep.
So we lost $800,000 last year, so we dropped down to $800,000, again, round numbers. So we'll generate a surplus this year of roughly $30,000, so that's added to our 800. So we'll be sitting at June 30 with $830,000.
So $800,000 we lost, if you will, last year, we're only making up 40,000, $38,000?
Correct, and again, because we have retained earnings, we're able to handle that.
And that's assuming our estimates of what's going to happen going forward are on the mark.
Correct.
All right.
So again, that's option one that we'll present, is no rate increase right now, but we would be looking at July, and again, the estimate is 8.5, but obviously, we'll come back to the group and make the updated projections. The other slides within that are all just rate, you know, what the rates would be that Mr. Collins put together. So the second one, and Mr. Chair, I apologize, I believe I told you earlier that we didn't have an option two, I was looking at the old one, where there was a proposed rate increase for February. So we do have option two, which would be a 5% increase in March. Again, that will certainly assist and give us additional revenue, but it will still leave us in that position come July 1st, that we will need to raise rates again to get to those targets. And again, just looking at rough numbers, you know, you could say 3.5% is what we'd probably be looking at in July. Again, overall, 8.5% between options one and two.
Is the recommendation for option one also March? Why are we waiting till March?
No, March is no, no rate increase until July 1st. No rate increase until July 1st.
I'm sorry, my hearing aids don't work right first.
Yeah, so we come back for a July rate increase on option one.
Option one, July 1st effective date.
I'll do nothing, and if everything's right, we'll make...
Correct. So option two, as I mentioned, 5% in March, and then we'd reevaluate in July, but again, that's estimated that we'd have a subsequent increase three months later, 3.5%. Again, there's pros and cons to that. And then the final option, option three.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I guess I go back to the same question, why are we waiting till March? And you've got here percentages and everything, but what does this mean in money? Where's the dollars? How is this compared to the $38,000 or the $800,000? What's the numbers? What's this 5% going to bring me in in dollars?
I was just going to say that.
The next slide to show us.
No, I don't think we, so, like I said, I did not include that one in, but that's going to get us, I believe, that will get us $400,000, get us up to 5.43%. So you're saying...
Mr. Chairman, can I jump in for just a moment?
Yes, Mr. Bazooka.
Sorry, just over here, Mr. Plasko's question, the reason for the March 1 start date is even if the board approves a rate, it still takes time for the billing department to get the rate program, to get notice out, and then have it take effect, so there's always a lot of six-week lag from the board saying, the rate shall be X to when that rate actually takes effect on bills.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I'm going towards Bill's Avenue here, I'm just, when you say $400,000, is that the 5% we're looking to have a profit at the end of the year? As our anticipated budget?
So the 5% is the rate increase as of March 1st.
Right, but is that going to get us in the...
That will get us, that will get us about $400,000 in revenue.
At the end of this fiscal year?
At the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, so that means we'll be at 1.2338?
Correct.
All right.
And July 1 would be fiscal year '26, and so the second rate increase would be funding FY '26 operations and retained earnings?
Yes, correct. Correct. So then the option three is to do a 7% rate increase March 1st. At that point, we can look at it, I believe that would take us right through fiscal year '26, get us to, based on our projections, and again... But that's going to get us, I believe, that will get us $400,000, get us up to 5.43%. So, you're saying-
Mr. Chairman, can I jump in for just a moment?
Yes, Mr. Bazooka.
Sorry, just over here, Mr. Plasko's question. The reason for the March 1 start date is even if the board approves a rate, it still takes time for the billing department to get the rate program, to get notice out, and then have it take effect. So, there's always about a six-week lag from the board saying, "The rate shall be X," when that rate actually takes effect on bills.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I'm, I'm going towards Bill's Avenue here. I'm just, when you say 400,000, is that the 5% we're looking to, to have a profit at the end of the year? As our anticipated budget?
So, the 5% is the rate increase as of March 1st.
Right. But is that going to get us in the interest of how much?
That will get us, that will get us about $400,000 in revenue.
At the end of this fiscal year?
At the end of this fiscal year.
Okay. So, that mean we'll be at 1.2, 3, 38?
Correct.
All right.
And July 1 would be fiscal year '26. And so, the second rate increase would be funding FY '26 operations and retained earnings?
Yes, correct. Correct. So, then, option three is to do a 7% rate increase March 1st. At that point, we can look at it. I believe that would take us right through fiscal year '26, get us to, based on our projections, and again, those will change. But that should get us comfortably into that 10% range. The only caveat, and I talked to Mr. Collins, and I think he mentioned it before, is because we're having a good year this year, the MWRA increase may be a little bit greater than what I had presented, that, that 2 and 1/2%. But again, I don't think that's material in, in the end of it. So, we'll still be in that 10% range at the end of '26. So, it would be a 7% increase as of March 1st. No anticipated increases throughout the fiscal year. Unless something changes drastically.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I just have a, a question now for three of you, and Joe, especially. And I've been hopping on this because of the situation with some of the people that don't owe the big money on past due amounts and for the future use. These new water meters that we're changing, are they going to have the remote where, like, Walpole, so they can call the residents?
They're not calling the residents. No, the, the MTUs are calling out to a collection unit and then forwarding information to the billing department.
No, no, no. Let's say they, they came and changed my little meter head on my personal house. And I thought the guy said that that's going to be able to pick it up remotely from the tower. Then after there's a spike, they'll call the residents.
So, do you mean similar to what, I believe you, actually, you have a, a couple of your properties. So, basically, you'll get a notification if you have a-
Right, a spike.
Um, yes, I believe that's still going to be the case.
Yes. Okay. So, somebody at the light department is going to call the residents?
I don't know if they'll call them.
Usually, they'll let up. Like, I have to leave recently, a couple, maybe two months ago.
Well, the letter-
I have a mail saying that, that previous building here was spiked, and I might want to check, try to work it off for weeks.
Well, it's kind of too late then, but I know Walpole does it.
It's a little bit behind.
But Walpole does it. They call right at that instance because there's not many that, that spike written the next morning when they come in.
All right. I'm not sure if they-
Can we look at that?
I, I think they do make some phone calls, Mr. Chairman.
All right. That's, that's important. So, are we looking for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I think we have a head matter here.
Mr. Lane, thank you. I have a question about the, the municipal rate for municipal buildings, the 25%. So, what's the rate that the MWRA charges us? Because they don't differentiate between residential and municipal or anything like that. What is that rate, the per cubic, uh, hundred cubic foot?
The wholesale rate. I don't have that in front of me, but it's something I could definitely provide the board. I could look that up tomorrow and send it to you, send it to the board. I don't have that in front of me right now.
Yeah. Just because I'm thinking, I think Mr. Bazooka talked about before, like, you know, not paying twice for overhead and things like that. I understand that. But if, and I don't even know, like, what this, like, actual dollar amount is, you know, for these municipal buildings. But it's, if, if the rate, if, you know, these options presented a rate of 1.27, and if that's less than what we're getting charged by the MWRA just for water, it feels like we're just going to, that's going to be like, you're going to start out in the hole? If that makes sense?
I know it's definitely, the wholesale rate is higher than the municipal building rate. Um, the exact amount, I'm not totally sure, but I can def, I can give that to you pretty quickly tomorrow.
The total water usage for, if I could jump in, Mr. Chairman, the total water usage for town buildings prior to making that adjustment, it's not more than a couple hundred thousand dollars. So, the, the usage for municipal buildings is not significant overall to the, um, the whole water system.
So, even if, if that percentage rate changed a little bit, Mr. Bazooka, it's not going to make a big difference?
No. So, we, let's say the board were to go with what's on the screen here, option seven, option seven, option three. That percent gets, uh, gets applied to the municipal rate. So, our, our water rates, if you will, in the facilities budget will still go up by roughly that amount, uh, next year.
Yeah. Mr. Lane?
No, I, I get it. I just feel, it feels like it's not covering even what we're getting charged for that water. Does that make sense, Mr. Bazooka?
Uh, it, it does. You've got to remember that the MWRA rate, it's hard to compare sort of a gallon to a gallon. Not only are we adding on our costs, but the MWRA, part of our cost is the overall system share, and it has to do with how we apply sewer as well. So, it's sort of hard to make an apples-to-apples comparison. When we reduced the municipal rate a couple of years ago, the idea was, as you mentioned earlier, we wanted to make sure we weren't double taxing ourselves, double paying ourselves. You know, we sort of take the, the water sewer fund, if you will, pays for a portion of the DPW director's salary, for instance, because that's a proper enterprise fund accounting. So, then, we're going to the public and saying, "Hey, you're paying it here, and you're paying it here." So, it's brought down to sort of be the, um, the, uh, the most, the most minimal amount it could be sort of impacting both sides. Otherwise, we're just raising money on one side of the ledger to dump it onto the other side of the ledger.
Mr. Lane, do you have?
I'm just processing what he said.
And, and would you be interested in perhaps a further discussion or analysis of the bring that's compared to MWRA?
No, we, yeah, we, I don't want it to hold up a vote or anything like that. Yeah. I think it's, it's an interesting point to, to sort of dig in a little bit on that.
Very good. Yeah. Mr. Groh, have anything? Otherwise, I- Mr. Groh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Right now, I just, I kind of want to recap for folks on the three options we've been presented with. My impression is that if you go, say, with option three, for example, we're not hitting people with an adjustment in the middle of the summer, the summer being when people are, that's when their usage is going to really go up, and so, you're not sort of smacked with, you know, a big jump all at once. Instead, you sort of get time to, and ease your, your rate usage, knowing what it's going to be before you get there. And so, I just want to make sure that if there's any other particular benefits, you know, advantages or disadvantages between the three options that you put before us, that was a good time to highlight those if we missed any.
If I could just, you brought up perhaps one of the, what I think is one of the better options or one of the better justifications. This would probably move our rate setting to permanently being in the winter, and that benefits us for a couple of reasons. One, as you mentioned, in the past, we've always typically raised rates in July, which, when some businesses, but certainly residents are using the most water, people are feeling cooled, they're watering outside. January, February, March tend to be the lowest months for water usage, and the impact is hitting when it actually hits people's payments the least. By also moving to the winter for a rate-setting period, we've been through town meeting with capital, so we know exactly what the impact would be there. And we've seen how the summer is, right, I shouldn't say right now, but historically the last couple of years, for many years, we're raising rates in the summer based on what we sort of projected for a fiscal year. But a dry summer, we collect a lot of revenue from water rates. A really wet summer, it starts to plummet down. This sort of lets us look at the summer rather than in the past, we're doing it in June, we're trying to think of the past summer, summer which has already closed out the fiscal year. It also somewhat divorces us from a fiscal year, which we're very fiscal, uh, fiscal year minded when it comes to the expense budget. But at the end of the day, the expense budget is irrelevant to how wet or dry it is, and that's really what the driver of both our revenue and our cost is. Now, on the revenue side, if it's particularly wet, we don't make a lot of revenue. If it's dry, we make a lot of revenue. That comes to bite us in the behind a year or two later, where our total MWRA bill, which is always a year or two behind, ends up going up and increases our overall system share, which we don't want to do, although sometimes it's unavoidable for us.
Mr. Plasko?
Thank you. Sorry to your opinion that the third option, 7%?
Yes.
What does that get us at the end of the fiscal year? You said option two would be 400,000?
Yep. That should get us around 600,000?
About 600?
Yep.
And no rate increase in July, technically.
Correct. 607 is the round number there.
All right. I guess I'll make a philosophical statement. So, it's a question for you to tell me why it's wrong. I'm concerned now that we entered into the enterprise fund, that we manage it and handle it properly, and we're just basically learning how to do that with the water. So, the volatility that Mr. Bazooka just mentioned throughout the year and the usage of, of the water and so forth, hard to, hard to necessarily calculate because of many factors that may tip the scales on, on what we anticipated. So, it appears to me that we're a lot safer, at least for the next couple of years, till we really feel that we know what we're doing, that we revisit this every six months, not, say, to option three, 7%, and carry that all the way to next January. I'd like to see a mid-year review again, at least for another year or two, to feel comfortable that, how this is, how this is going. And, and point out that, in my view, over a reasonable period of time, I'm looking to make up $800,000. And at best, I'm going to be making up six. I'm still 200,000 behind. And I'd want to look at the, that situation as we go into the second six months of 2025 and decide what's appropriate to do at that time. So, I think from a fiscal responsibility of trying to manage this properly and keep the right balance, right reserves in there, right retained earnings, the make-up for lost time, if you will, or lost money from the first go-around, that I wouldn't want it. I'd like to do option three, seven, but only until mid-year, and that we do a revisit then, at which we may decide not to increase, at which we'll keep the 7% till January, like is being recommended tonight, or make a change. But we'll have fresh data to make that decision then instead of today.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko.
Mr. Chairman, can I just address Mr. Plasko?
Mr. Plasko, yes, please.
Um, you know, I always throw words like tentative in there. So, when we say that a 7% increase would tend, I say, would tend to mean no increase in July, we would certainly bring it back and forth. We're certainly going to have to look at it. It's important to note that any projection we make is what 1% general rates, what 2% general rates, it's always subject to that same volatility, Mr. Plasko, suggested. So, we can come back in July and say, "Listen, it's been great. Everything's working wonderful." We could be back in July saying, "Look, we've had a couple of terrible months, and we do need a rate increase." So, if you want to commit it, we'll bring back sometime in June and July how the first six months this year met. Absolutely, we can do that. When we say we don't think that will require a rate increase in July, that is, if everything looks like works the way we're anticipating it, and the weather cooperates, whatever that means these days, we wouldn't. But it always, the board always has the option, and we're always going to continue monitoring it because, again, it is weather-dependent. Big picture, even though it's tough to sort of go to an enterprise fund 50 or 60 years after you've been doing something, or 100 years for that matter, it's going to take us several years to get to both the fund balance we want and to get where we want to do, which puts the town overall in a better financial position. Years ago, if we did lose money, we were either transferring at the end of the year or, to Jeff's earlier point, it, it reduced the amount of free cash available. Now, so, the risk there is, of course, free cash. We, we had a good year this year, maybe next year, we did the year before. In a typical year where we're generating $4 or $5 million in free cash, a high number, we can't take a $2 million loss in water and sewer and still have money for capital and for everything else.
Mr. Bazooka, you keep pointing out that things can change. We look at July, there's no guarantee that's going to be the same. That's why I want to look at it as often as possible. And I don't want to bore that, bringing you in every month. So, let's do it every six months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bazooka. Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bazooka, you touched on this, too. We do have a lot of free cash this year. I don't know what, it's 30-ish million was at the-
600.
29 million.
29. Just, you know, I don't know. If, if this rate increase is to get us this, this retained earnings to the 10%, and expenses, total expenses last year were 20 million, and it sure went up 2 million, is that, is that sort of the expected rate of increase each year, or?
Well, so, it depends on, again, usage. When we started out with a water lining project, we knew that that was going to cost well at 2% to 3% a year in rates. And then, you got to add on to that the MWRA rates and our local charge.
Yeah.
This was all mapped out six years ago when we started the lining project, knowing that we'd be roughly in, um, in this category. We're not going to get to that 10% and feel comfortable for a couple of years. It's going to take time for us to get there. And then, there could be good years where we go above it. There could be years where we don't go above that or where we have to take money out of it. You could also, eventually, once we have a healthy fund balance, that'll reduce your borrowing long-term. So, if we have $3 million in there for personal discussion, and we have an $800,000 water sewer capital expense, today, we'd be borrowing that, which increases the rates at whatever that cost of borrowing is. Otherwise, once we have a fund balance in there, there, that might start being able to pay for more of its capital projects, which is, is part of a number of things we've done over the last 10 years to stop these things that are eating at our free cash.
Thank you. I mean, since we have so much free cash, couldn't we fund this with free cash and just get to that number and not have an increase? Is that, is that?
Again, with the enterprise fund, it's really, the user charges are supposed to cover all expenses.
Right.
So, that transfer from free cash or, you know, it's going to be more directed by DOR saying, "You have a deficit in that fund."
Yeah.
It's not common practice, and, you know, I don't even think DOR would probably allow it.
Right. No.
They'd ask us to look at what we're doing with the user charges and fees.
Yeah.
Mr. Sam?
So, I'm, I guess my question is, option one is 0%. Option two is 5%. And option three is 7%?
Well, option two, I think the, yeah, option one is no rate increase. Option two is 5% on March 1st with a second July 1st 25 increase projected at 3.5.
Correct.
So, you're talking 8.5%?
Exactly.
Ugh. I'm with Mr. Plasko. I think option one is the way to go. And if we can get money somehow, if it's an emergency, we'll find it some way to get in that fund. And I don't think the state should be telling us we have to have 10% in the fund when we get 29 million in a fund. These, these poor taxpayers are getting killed this month. But that's my point.
So, do you advocate for option one?
Yeah, option one.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't think that's going to-
Okay. I don't, I don't know if that's what Mr. Plasko is suggesting. But, but before Mr. Plasko chimes in, I, I think there are some worry about option one, no increase. That means, that, that seems to be financial risk to me. You're not, you're not, you're not going to be able to generate the kind of retained earnings that you need for the very things Mr. Bazooka just spoke about. And I'm wondering whether or not it will put the system in a slight, somewhat of a, a, a bad situation in that we're not generating the rate revenue needed to pay for the cost that the system has, both in retained earnings as well as ongoing fluctuations and so forth.
Mr. Chairman, that, that's accurate. To be clear, I don't want anyone to think that option one means this is great and don't that option one means this is great and we don't have an increase. It's no increase now with the projected minimum increase of 8.5% for July 1st. So it's, and you can do the math about whether 7 now versus they have been at the starting point for July. The law, any utility function, the longer you delay a rate increase, it increases by a multiple factor going up of how much more you need because you're not having the time to collect it. So if anyone's interested in option one, and we strongly recommend against that, just understand in July you'll be looking minimum 8.5% as well as putting the system at risk. And, look, maybe we only lose a half a million dollars this year. That's a half a million dollars at town meeting and free cash we don't have for any of the other many needs that we have. And that could have some potential credit rating risk impacts if we're running the system so poorly that it effectively is running at a deficit. The town has the cash flow to cover that, but it's very poor practice.
Yeah, I think, I think option two and three puts us on a more secure financial footing going forward. And option one kind of delays the inevitable, but we have some risk between now and July 1 that we would be incurring without an earlier rate increase. So I'm, I would, I would, you know, my debate internally right now is just between two and three, but let's continue to talk. Any other questions regarding the hearing? Mr. Plasko.
I'm sorry. Again, terminology, how you stated it here, when you say March, is that the bills that go in March, which is February's usage, or is it for March that you said we're not going to start counting until April?
It'd be February's usage and then they would, it'd be charged in March.
Because that would be, that would be my motion to start with usage effective February 1st.
What percent? What percent?
7% to be reviewed mid-year.
So we'll look, so just to, just to review the numbers, we'll throw out these numbers, but option one would be no rate increase, but it would probably kick it out to July 1, which we'd be looking at 8.5% in July 1. Option two tells us we do a 5% increase March 1, but we're probably looking at July increase to 3.5, so we're total of 8.5. And the 7% effective March 1, that would, that, that kind of heads us towards the right direction. I think we want to go in terms of establishing a really solid retained earnings. Not going to get us to that 10% of operating budget. Or, is it operating budget or operating revenue?
Expenditures.
Expenditures. However, it moves us to that target. I think it helps us mitigate against any revenue fluctuations during that, during that period. And it provides a solid base for us to support our capital projects going forward as we evaluate them. So, you know, I guess I, at this point, I'm leaning towards the option three, but consider our input from other members as well at this point. Ms. Grow. Yeah, I know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And my question is, we're, from what Mr. Plasko was saying earlier, can I try and understood his comments correctly? If we went with option three, which the way it's written is saying, you know, we didn't anticipate an increase in July, if you have to do it, it wouldn't be until this January, that we're saying if we chose option three, we would still want to be reviewing it in July, regardless of whether we think we need to, we still would want to review it in July, correct?
Yes. It's my understanding. Do you have a comment?
I am.
Yep. Ms. Grow.
I'm also leaning towards three with the July sort of mid-year touch point, I think would not be wise to go all the way until next January without reviewing it, talking about it again. But that's currently where I'm sitting. I wouldn't be in favor of option one just from the, the risk profile. I think within ourselves, if we go with option one and say, oh, we don't have to do an increase, and then we have to smack everybody with a really bad increase, if things go sideways.
I think at this point, if the, the select board has, went through their, their questions about the presentation, this is a public hearing and I do want to have the opportunity to open for public comment. So why don't we take one more comment, Mr. Sad, and then we'll move.
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman, for the people in TV land and our people on the board. I guess for the three here, in six years from now, Mark, when we's done with this relining of the pipes, we're going to save 4.6 or 8 million per year after that, because that's what we're budgeting now, right?
You won't have that capital expense.
Right, so that, that fund's going to go way up.
But you will have other expenses.
Well, I realize that, piping and breaking, and I understand that.
Well, the lead water service program is going to be expensive.
Yeah, but I can't think there's that many people with lead pipes in Norwood.
Excuse me?
And you have the water tank project.
And the water tank, yeah.
At this point, this is a public hearing. If the board is so willing, I'll move on to public comment. If there's any member of the public that would like to speak at this public hearing regarding the water rate, please do so now.
I'd like to.
Mr., could you stand up and identify yourself and?
I'm Steve Kenechi from Three Harold Road, Tomy, Member, District 4.
Good evening.
Hi. Just seems to me with, it's an admirable thing to want to get to this 10% retained earnings. But at the same time, we're looking at an 8.1% increase in our school budget and we've been told that we're going to be looking at a, at a large budget increase at town meeting in the spring. And I don't think this is a good time to be all of a sudden saying, okay, let's just increase 8% right now and we'll just bring that right through. I think we should go with a smaller number that's easier for the taxpayers to swallow so that we can, you know, make this up over time and eventually get to that, maybe a year or two down the line. But I don't think we, I don't think it's a good idea to do it right now.
Thank you, Mr. Kenechi.
Yeah.
Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak at this hearing? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
Mr. Lane, motion is to close. Mr. Sad, second. We'll take a roll call vote to close the public hearing. Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Ms. Grow?
Yes.
And chair votes yes, the, the public hearing is now closed. At this point, what is the will of the board regarding the rate setting?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to propose an increase effective March 1st, 2025, 7% for both water and sewer charge.
That would be, just to clarify, on our document, that is option three. Mr. Plasko, on the motion.
I'm sorry, could you clarify that? I apologize. I was doing good at the beginning of the meeting and then halfway through my hearing age stopped working.
Yep.
Everything I've done, they haven't reset.
I was proposing to go with option three, the 7% increase March 1st.
Just as, just as is recommended through till next January?
Yep.
On the motion, do I have a second? Ms. Grow, seconds. Any discussion on the motion, option three? Mr. Plasko.
Yeah, I would be opposed for reasons I stated earlier, that I'm not comfortable with going to January without further review. And I would want to only go six months at this point, not, not a full year. And I might tend to be leaning towards reducing my earlier comment to option two. I'm trying to make up lost grounds, as I keep saying to him, you see it, that gets a 400 instead of 600. But maybe a point's been made that we should do what's responsible, but maybe a little less aggressively. So instead of going for the, the, the option three, I would go for the option two. And again, just until mid-year. So I would be opposed to motion as it's on the floor.
And just for clarification, Mr. Plasko, for, for option three and for two, you would, you would want that mid-year review before the rate setting for the next period of time, if I understood you right?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on the motion?
I'm in the same cabinet as Bill and I think that I'd love a 4%, but that's me. I can amend it, but I'm not going to right now.
Okay. Any other comment? So on the motion, Mr. Lane's motion is to select option three, the 7% increase effective March 1st, 2025, with a rate increase on January 1st, 2026 to be determined. They would be, we're not setting a rate for January 1st, 2026, but that would be the timeline for our consideration. Mr. Plasko.
Yeah. Not to be arguing, but to be asking for clarification, because we don't want to get into some legal battle, someone decides to come out with, when you say effective March, they said that's when the bills go out based on February. So do you want the effective date February 1st or do you in fact want March 1st?
Well, I don't think it's going to pass anyways. I don't really, whatever.
Well, what's a good question.
I don't want to say March and then start billing February and have somebody challenge it and say you voted effective March 1st.
Oh, for March?
Effective date of the charge. They will get it in the bills.
Right.
Till March, but when are they going to stop paying the new rate?
Right.
That, Mr. Collins, please.
So they'll start, so like if you, if you vote for March 1st, they'll start paying for the new rate starting in March when they receive their bills, usually like a week or so into the month.
Not one day, Scott. I don't care when they pay, when is it going to go effective, when are they going to be responsible for it? When is the rate going into effect?
It will still go into March, but they'll be paying for the February use.
So I'll go back to my question, why are we waiting till March? Why aren't we doing the first February?
Well, it's been general.
Why are we going till the month?
It's been general practice to include and insert in all of the, in all of the bills to notify all the rate payers that we are increasing rates. And we, we need at least a few weeks before this, for the next billing cycle, which is going to be February, to notify all of our rate payers. So that's why we're always about six weeks ahead of time.
But you're notifying in, in February, but isn't a notification saying that effective March 1st, the rate's going from here to there?
Yes.
So that, they're not being billed in February for a rate increase that's effective March 1st?
Right.
Was that, was that your question, Mr. Plasko, basically?
Yeah. Good clarification. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before we go to roll call vote? This is on Mr. Lane's motion for option three. We'll go to a roll call vote. Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
No.
Mr. Sad?
No.
Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Chair will vote no, so that motion fails three to two. We'll entertain a second motion.
Well, that we approve the recommended increase of option two, 5% effective March 1st, 2025, to be reviewed in July, for July 1, the week period.
Do I have a second on Mr. Plasko's motion for option two?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. On the motion, yes, Mr. Mr., sorry, Mr. Lane.
If we went with that option two, 5% March 1st, there would need to be a rate increase July 1st.
As proposed, yes.
Got it.
To be determined.
To be determined, yeah.
Which is the review process you're talking about.
Yes.
It could be more, it could be less. We don't know at this point. Anything else on that motion? Option two, motion, Mr. Plask, yes, Mr. Plask.
If all the assumptions today are correct, then we'll have to review it and say we need another 2% and get up to that 7%.
Yeah.
Until, till the following day. If not, we may need even more if we were wrong.
Or potentially.
Or we might be able to just keep it at the, the five and not have to go up at all. As you said, as the chairman says, we don't know. It's all guesswork.
Okay.
A little more than guesswork, but guesswork.
Okay.
Educated guesswork.
So we're hedging our bet a little.
A little bit. Anything else on the motion? Some, on, on the motion for option two, I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Donley, the chair votes yes as well, so that passes five to nothing. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in and for your patience in, in waiting. Mr. Kenechi, thank you for attending the hearings and offering your input.
We have one more left. No, we have one more left.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Happy New Year.
All right, we go back to our agenda, which I buried here somewhere. Thank you, sir. Next is item five, memorandum. Any motion from the board for memorandum?
Motion to approve the light department check, is that what you're asking?
Yes, the memorandum is light department broadband submitting quarterly franchise free payment for calendar year 2024 quarter four.
Motion to file.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll take, Ms. Grow has a second, everybody, everybody's second. And a roll call vote on motion for memorandum. On the motion, Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that's unanimous. I think we now turn to managers' update.
Tony, you want to take it? Yeah, please. Okay. Good evening, members of the board. Just three quick updates. We were talking summer concerts earlier today. Interestingly enough, we also had our first July 4 meeting last night, so they're rocking and rolling already, you know, six months prior to July 4. That committee met to begin next year's preparations. Also, the capital outlay committee will be meeting in February to talk about the school IT capital needs, which falls in the May town meeting cycle. And just lastly, I'll mention a bit of good news, that the town of Norwood is winning a risk management award from Maya, our insurance company. We are going to be honored and recognized at Connect 351, which is the old MMA conference in Boston next week. And so a couple of us will be accepting the award on behalf of the town. And that's due to the good work that our safety committee has been doing over the last couple of years. We've been recognized as a leader amongst our peers for risk management. So good news there. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I had for tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, sorry, I know I said I was going to pass it over to Mr. Rosen, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention that the safety committee is chaired by Mr. Rosen and the award, although due to the committee, is largely due to Mr. Rosen's efforts leading up our safety functions.
Way to go, Mike.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anything else? Gentlemen? Thank you. Now we'll go to selectmen. Addenda, I'm going to start, since I've been calling on you for votes first, Mr. Lane, I'm going to start with you.
Sounds good. I'll be very brief. Thank you, Mr. Rosen, for being here. Just a quick note to mention, Christine, thank you for passing these out. Tomorrow at Northeastern University is the second annual blood donation drive in honor of Tyler Lawrence. His mother had reached out to the board and asked us to spread the word. I know that at town hall, there's been some, some of these notices put up, too. It's from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the John D. O'Brien African American Institute. That's on Leon Street at Northeastern. So if you work in the neighborhood or you have the day off, it'd be a really nice thing to do. And just personally, just getting to know Ms., Tyler's mom, you know, it's really nice to see turning tragedy into something positive. I know that she's expressed interest in possibly becoming a town meeting member, so these are all good things. And I think she's really grateful for the community and the support there, too. So I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Mr. Plasko.
Thank you. Couple items actually tonight. First one, Mr. Chairman, is we have talked about having a special town meeting in March and we have scheduled, I believe, a next week's meeting, or our next meeting to talk about articles for that town meeting. This has been designed to be mostly planning items and they have submitted four for consideration, one of which is really, has to do with the accessory dwelling units. And all it's doing is saying what the law says and the law applies to us anyhow. There are some choices the community can make under the law, but this proposal for March doesn't contain any of those. So there's really no need to take that action. And there's three other items that, housekeeping items that need to be done, but again, there's no necessity for them to be done quickly and any particular, any reason to need to call a town meeting. One has to do with floodplain zoning. That is a little more involved, more pages and so forth for people to read, but it's all pretty technical and legally required. And again, we don't have to comply with it for at least six months. So my point is, it costs money to go to town meeting. It, it intervenes people to go to town meeting and we should only call town meetings when there's either enough business or, or urgent business to be done. And it just doesn't seem to be, have, have developed that way. And I, I'd like to recommend that we cancel that town meeting.
If I could chime in as well, Mr. Plasko. So Ms. Dixon, Director of Community Development, did transmit to, to me, I think today or yesterday, the, the articles that the planning board is recommending for town meeting. And I, I concur with your observations. Mr. Mizuka, you can chime in as well, but in, in conversation with Ms. Dixon, I think she concurs that perhaps these articles need not be considered for a March town meeting. We do have another town meeting coming up in, in May, just two months later. It, it just seems a matter of that we, we could be in a situation where convening a town meeting for, for brief topics that probably could be, level of effort, maybe less than an hour of discussion and voting. So, but Mr. Mizuka, I don't know if you had the opportunity to, to review the planning articles yourself and could you chime in?
I, I can, sure. So Mr. Plasko's point, we envision sort of trying to do town meeting three times a year, one to two nights a year to make sure, particularly with the land use, spend the time to focus on larger land use changes. And we've been successful at that. I don't know that these four articles are anything of, they're always important. I would agree that I don't know at this point that it's significant enough that we would want to call a town meeting for these four articles. If you think we did 3A separately because we want to make sure the information that we could do and everything we could get out there, that all the conversation could be on land use. If you think of some of the other large rezones that have gone downtown, the Route 1 corridor, that occupies a lot of time, a lot of training, a lot of boards and committees get interest, this is not the case. I do know that the school department was interested in two articles. I believe they were appropriation articles. I believe they were appropriation articles. I'll double check with the Superintendent, but I believe he told me that they could also wait till May, and I see no reason why they couldn't wait till May. I know that, I may be coming forward with an article or two for the Board's consideration for the May Town Meeting. Nothing that we, and again, we're trying to do just land use in March, but I think once the Boards have a chance to look at them, wait until May is not a, not a bad idea. Because as Mr. Plasko said, I think two are technical corrections. The floodplain mapping gets, it's a little bit more detailed, but we really don't have a lot of flexibility on that. And then the ADU bylaw, until the state completes all its information, we're just, we're passing a bylaw that says you have to comply with the state, which we have to comply with, what the state's told us to comply with.
I guess we could handle it in a couple of ways. We could kind of chime in to this evening. I believe, Mr. Mizuka, Mr. Rosen, on our timeline, next meeting was the meeting where we formally considered whether or not those articles should be?
I believe your next meeting was you were going to review the draft warrant and yellow sheet, and the February meeting, and vote on it.
Doesn't seem like, if, maybe tonight needs to be a decision point, as I don't believe that we want to put people through the effort of developing yellow sheets for a meeting that may not be helped, so.
And people, people planning also, if people would like to plan a vacation, it'd be nice to know whether we're having a Town Meeting or not.
Any other input from the members?
Do you need a motion on that?
I, I never need a motion.
I have a motion to cancel the anticipated March Town Meeting.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So we have a motion to cancel the March Town Meeting made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Lane. Roll call vote on the motion, Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Mr. Plasko.
Yes.
Mr. Sad. Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Plasko, anything else?
Thank you, Number 2. What has happened? Who can answer me? With Vernon Street, 20 Vernon Street. The vote at Town Meeting was concluded with the fact that a deed restriction in perpetuity and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a grant agreement with security provisions for the benefit of Town of Norwood, governing the distribution of such funds. And has it come back to us? We haven't seen anything. There was a draft at Town Meeting, but not a final thing, nothing that's actually been before the Board, and legally, we have to be signing a document. And we shouldn't be distributing any funds until we've done that. And I'm just wondering, time's passing, what's happened to that issue?
Mr. Chairman, I can, I will have to check with the Community, CPA admin on that. Nothing has come to my office either for review or to send it to the Board, so I will get an update and get back to the Board.
Yeah, that's what I would do, ask the Manager for an update. Thank you. The other thing, maybe, is I'd like to tell the pub, remind the public that the Women's Community Committee, which does a lot of nice work around Town, makes nice contributions, tries to help us all out in many, in many ways, are selling their, celebrating their 100th anniversary, and they're having a open skate at the Skating Club of Boston on January So I just want to remind the public that that's available. It's free skating and free skate rental. There is one requirement, however, that you be pre-registered for the event. So if you have any interest in attending and getting yourself or the kids out on the ice, please contact either the Skating Club of Boston or the Women's Community Committee, and look into the details of participating in that event on January 26th. I believe the hours are 4 to 6 in the evening, or afternoon. 2 to 4, 2 to 4, 2, 2 to 4 in the afternoon. And I'd also remind the public, since we won't be meeting till the 28th, that on the 26th, the group that was just before us tonight, the winter concerts starts January 26th, Portrait and Jazz will be performing, and that's Sunday afternoon from 2 to 4. One other thing, I don't know if people have had a chance to see yet, was in the packets that were in envelopes that were left on your, your spots. I picked mine up a few days ago, so I've had a chance to just kind of look at it. And it's from the Airbnb organization, and I don't know, I think we probably have to go through Town Council and some people, whether we're actually interested in the information in this brochure, and whether we want to partner with them, or how we would partner with them, as far as if we have to bid or anything, this type of thing. But what it brings to my attention is we approved at a Town Meeting Airbnbs. But we did not sit in any kind of mechanism to monitor, to manage it. We did not set up any kind of bylaw to control it. And I think maybe we should have either the General Manager's staff, or someone from the Board and the General Manager and Town Council, a small group, look into whether or not it's wise to just leave things the way they are, or to get a bylaw, or to get involved in an organization like this for doing monitoring of Airbnb activities. Right now, we not, may not think that there's a lot of it. We're not necessarily a recreation or a, you know, seasonal vacation type of destination, but there is the, people coming for football games, and when Boston gets busy, they're looking for housing anywhere. So people in Norwood may consider doing more of that in the future. And with accessory dwelling units, as they get built, there may be a question of whether they're used for Airbnb, Airbnb type activities, and therefore, is it wise for us to think about having some further controls than we have today? I don't have an answer. I'm asking a lot of questions. But I guess I'm trying to suggest that maybe we want to take a minute to look into this a little more seriously, a little more fully than we have today.
Sounds good. Mr. Mizuka, may we look to your, your advice and review of that? I know if you've got a copy of the brochure that Mr. Plasko's speaking to, but we can certainly avail you to it.
I do. If the Board, if you give us a little bit of time, what we can come up with is just sort of a variety of options, what's out there, what's out there for bylaws, what are other towns doing. I think Mr. Plasko's referring to the short-term rental tax, which we adopted a couple of years ago. We don't generate much revenue from it, but we've gotten one or two co-complaints, if you will, about an Airbnb here or there. So I think it's timely and appropriate that we look into what other communities have done, and what regulations, if any, we can put in place.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, would be a good start. And I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Mr. Sad?
I guess Bill wants to rent out Memorial Hall for the World Cup. I have a couple of things. I'll be skating with Bill at the 26th Women's Community Committee, weather permitting. A couple of things, Mr. Manager, and Mike, it was brought to my attention from the Chairman of the South Norwood Committee about lights under the bridges, of all bridges in Norwood, if we can look at getting some lights or other trains to put, at CXS, to somebody to put some lighting under the bridges when the people are walking through with their carriages and their babies, and et cetera, et cetera. So maybe any bridges we have, we can look at them and see who, whose response will put lights under there. Second thing is Tasso's down at the airport. I was called in there, looking for tent spots designated out front of their restaurant. It seems like a lot of people are just parking, and they have no parking for the seniors or the semi-disabled that walk into their restaurant. So if we can work on that, that would be great. And then congratulations to all the winter sports, the girls' basketball and hockey teams off to a great start, and I'll be working to the other teams in the, in their future, indoor track and stuff. But other than that, to my brother Dave, he's getting a speed to recovery, and he's almost back to speed, so get well, God's bless you, and Happy New Year to all.
And just, just to tag on to Mr. Sad's commentary, regarding the airport, Mr. Mizuka, I'm going to assume that you would have to coordinate conversations with the Airport Manager?
Mark.
Regarding the, the parking?
And the Airport Commission in particular?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Will forward that request along to them, to take a look at it.
Ms. Grow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to be short, since I'm A, remote, B, the night is long, so the only thing I was going to mention to folks is Happy New Year, and I'll save my more significant updates for the next time, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Grow. I only have 15 items this evening. Just kidding. Just four. Because you, you covered one from Mr. Plasko, thank you. Just a shout out to the Trails Committee for a great first day hike, January 1st, at Meadow Street. The, the trail that they have constructed along Meadow Street, along the, the Ponset River. I think they had about 100 participants in that first day walk, including a troop of Boy Scouts. If the Board remembers, we had a presentation sometime last year from Boy Scout Nick Brewer, who presented us detail about a project that he was working on to construct a small footbridge along the trail of Meadow Street, and, and the 100 people that participated in the hike were able to see the work that the Boy Scouts did to, to put that walking bridge over a, an area that was tough to, to access for the, for people walking the trail. So thank you, Trails Committee, and to Nick Brewer. I also want to just put a thank you out for the Town of Walpole, and I will, I think I'll have this, if I haven't already done this, send this out to the Board, but the Town of Walpole, the Board of Selectmen, I've got a copy from James O'Neill, the Select Board Chair, a letter to Governor Healy regarding the status of Norwood Hospital, and the letter is very reflective of the kind of information that, that we have also communicated and continued to communicate to the Commonwealth regarding the status of Norwood Hospital, and getting some action regarding, and communication regarding steps associated with reopening Norwood Hospital. So thank you, Town of Walpole. I also received some information from Mark Negron. Mark is our leader of the Norwood Community Food Forest Group, and he's posted me about an event on January the 25th at 7:00 PM at Emerald City Plant Shop at 702 Washington Street. This will be an event that will include Officer Begama, who will be talking to folks about the Norwood Juneteenth Celebration, and Mark will speak to the, the work that's being done at the Food Forest. And thank you, Mark, I saw him out in the, out in the Food Forest about two weeks ago, using a rotor tiller to till the area around the Food Forest, looks great. Thank you, Mark. And on February 1st, at Morse House from 4 to 6:00 PM, for those folks who are looking for nomination signatures for Town offices, there's a, an event at the Morse House, 4 to 6. Bring your nomination papers, you'll, you'll be able to get a lot of signatures if you are in need of them. And as a reminder, the filing of nomination signatures is February the 18th with the Town Clerk. And if you are a Town Meeting member currently, be sure that you, and you intend to be on the ballot in April, be sure you return the form that the Town Clerk sent out to current Town, Town Meeting Member, Members, where you indicate that you are or not, you are or you are not seeking reelection to your Town Meeting seat. They, too, are due on February the 18th. So those are my updates. With that, it's, it's been a long meeting. I thank everybody for hanging in there for this meeting. Thought it was a, a long, but very fruitful and data-driven meeting, and I appreciate the, your attendance and your participation in all the actions that we took this evening. Thank you, Board. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
And on the motion, roll call vote, Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Ms. Grow?
Yes.